I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Malp, we have some changes to the order of the agenda.
We do have some changes this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 5A, which is a report on SAMTrans and Caltrain service plans, has been postponed, so we'll move that to one of your May meetings at the next available time that the representative from SAMTrans can make that presentation. Let's see, item 7F, which is consideration of adoption of a resolution certifying the initial study and negative declaration of the Burton Park tree removal and replacement. Staff would like to pull that. We had some late information presented to us by members of the community related to potential historical nature of the trees at Burton Park as they relate to the negative declaration, and staff would like some time to review that, so we will re-calender that for the council. In addition to that, we'd like to move the order of the agenda around a little bit this evening. We're anticipating a rather lengthy public hearing on the Carlos Club, so we would like to take items 10A, B, and 11A ahead of our public hearings, and then switch the order of 9A and B, so we'll take 9B first, and that will leave the Carlos Club as the last item on the agenda this evening.
Okay. So, for those of you who came to speak for item 7F, we are not going to have that tonight. Sorry for you coming out, but it will be agendized as not a consent calendar item next time. It will come on the actual agenda, so we'll have a staff presentation and a report, so feel free to come back. It'll go out on our e-notify, but we don't want to waste any of your time sticking with us for the rest of the evening, so thank you for coming. Okay, so then we're going to report from closed session. There was no closed session, so we'll move on to council communications and announcements. We will start with Mr. Olbert, and if you could also, in your council communications and announcements, report on any of the boards you sit on as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I don't have anything to report for lack of meetings, other than to mention that I believe there's another CCAG subcommittee that I sit on that we probably ought to add to this list in the future, but it didn't have any meetings, this cycle here.
Okay. Mr. Grisilli?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing of community nature, but relative to the committees that I sit on, the Association of Bay Area Governments is having a spring meeting on the 19th over in Oakland, which I will be attending. It starts at 8:00 in the morning, goes till about 2:00, different speakers concerning certain items in the Bay Area, and also an official meeting of the A-BAG delegates. So I'll be representing San Carlos. The city and county association of governments will be having a meeting on the 12th, and we'll have -- other council members, by the way, are welcome to come to this one. We're going to be having a dinner, and we're going to be talking about sustainable communities and the regional housing needs allocation. We have two speakers, Steve Heminger, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission Executive Director, and Ken Kirke, the A-BAG Planning Director. So it could be fairly interesting if folks are available. That's it Thursday, April 12th, 6:00. It's not -- I mean, certainly other people could come, but it's certainly set up for council members to come, and it's going to be at the SAMTrans building on the second floor. And the last item is South Bayside System Authority, the board that I sit on. We have approved a 2012, 2013 budget, and there is no increase in the SBSA, South Bayside System Authority, flow and loading rates. That doesn't mean that our sewer rates aren't going to go up because we have the $400 million plant that we're rebuilding, but at least relative to the actual operations, there'll be no flow or loading rate increases this year. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll just keep going around the horn. I have nothing to report from any of the boards I sit on. Most of them haven't met since our last time reporting, but the San Mateo County Library Governing Board, combined with the Board of Supervisors, has appointed Don Eaton to the oversight board for the RDA. The San Mateo County Library was the largest special district, so they have a seat at the table, and Don Eaton, former mayor and library governing board member, will be taking that seat. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to report that I was recently elected to the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust Board, also called the HART Board. I replaced Randy Royce, and that board has expressed an interest in becoming involved in the absence or in the sense of demise of RDA, in seeing what they can do to help out cities with affordable housing. And in addition, I'd also like to make note that Randy Royce, who served on that board for four years, was given a certificate of appreciation for all of his years of service, and his are going to be big shoes for me to fill.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
I have two items. One is, again, regarding parking. Because I live in the downtown area, I guess I'm a little bit more attuned to the parking ordinances that we have, and I noticed over this particular weekend that we did have officers out, or the people that drive around the whole park there, marking for parking. And our signs, on the signs that we have downtown and around, say that parking is exempt for Sundays and holidays. And this weekend, as many of us know, was Good Friday on Friday, Saturday was Passover, and Easter was on Sunday. Of course, Easter is not an issue because Easter is on Sunday, and parking is exempt on Sundays. But I do think there could be a disconnect sometimes between what the public expects of holidays and when they read those signs, whether or not parking is enforced, versus what the city expects, and because with the city, it's primarily, I think, tied to the unions and when they recognize holidays for their employees. But I do think it's something that is of importance, that we should review as a council and look at what that policy is, and consider the expectations of the community, as well as what the expectations of the employees are who enforce the parking. So I would ask that sometime we take that up, perhaps have it looked at by our commission first that deals with parking and traffic and so forth, but maybe eventually bring it up to the council for review. The next thing I have, I wanted to step down to the podium here.
Okay.
I don't know how to close this. Christine? Did not. Ninety-seven.
Oh, excuse me, that was actually--
It wasn't ninety-seven.
It was 2007.
2007. I was going to say, I was on the council in ninety-seven.
Yes, we also have records, obviously, in the archive of the staff report.
So that's on -- we can get video of that if we wanted to.
We got video on the staff report, annual resolution, and the contract. There was a contract between the city of San Carlos, ICLAY. There was also another party that, or two other parties to that contract, joint venture Silicon Valley needs sustainable Silicon Valley. They were like a multi-party. And the purpose of that contract, we were one of 13 agencies in Silicon Valley that worked with those agencies to create the city's greenhouse gas inventory for 2007.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. I didn't ask that. Stop it. Item G is appropriation of $5,000-- Stop it. Okay, sorry, I didn't get to introduce that because it went so quick, but what you just watched was the recording from our council meeting in January of 2012, where there was on the agenda the ICLAY membership, and you just saw there the discourse that happened between myself and Mr. Mora, where I was asking if we had reviewed the bylaws or had the bylaws of ICLAY when we joined, and his answer was that we, that staff had attached a copy of the bylaws of ICLAY, and we also talked about the membership criteria. That was answered three times, that that was the case in the affirmative, that we had the bylaws and we looked at the criteria. Because you saw there how I questioned that, because I was on the council at the time, and I did not remember that occurring, or that being in our staff report, and then I questioned about whether or not we had video at the time of those meetings. So what I did is I went back and I took a look at what happened on those meetings, at that meeting, and so I'm going to show you a video of when Mr. Davis was the mayor. And what's going on here, just to introduce it just a little bit, is the item was item G on the consent calendar, and I pulled it off the consent calendar, and at that time, the way council meetings were conducted, the, anything that was on the consent that was pulled would be held to the end of the meeting. So Mr. Davis turns to me and asks me to take up the item, which I do.
$1,000 for greenhouse gas inventory of the city of San Carlos operations. And I said at the time that we looked at this and made the agreement that we'd work with Silicon Valley. Brian, what's the name of the group?
It's the Silicon Valley Climate Protection Task Force.
Right, exactly. And it's the climate protection part of it that I strongly disagree with. I don't agree with this whole global warming science. I think it's a bunk, to use a very bunk term, and if we want to talk about checking out our carbon footprint so that we can conserve on fuel for conservation purposes, for quality of life, for cleanliness and so forth, that's all we're on good.
Okay, I'm going to stop there just for sake of time. What ends up happening here is I make some comments and explain why I'm going to vote against the item. Mr. Grisilli makes the motion to pass it, and Mr. Lewis does the second, and we vote. There was only four of us that evening, and it passed 3 to 1. So my point of showing this is, it's important to me, we're on tape, and what happened in January was not the truth of the matter, and so I feel like it's important to show on tape again tonight, right now, what did happen, which is, we did not have, I have the agenda here from November 13, 2007. There is no attachment of the bylaws mentioned. The way our staff reports are written, it tells you what the attachments are. The attachments that are listed are here. I have them. The only other time in 2007 that we discussed this item was in May, and that's when actually the whole idea of greenhouse gases was introduced to the council, was in May of 2007, and then when the item that was discussed in May and talked about that we would have to take action and we would have some kind of contract to take care of that and so forth, that item was on the consent calendar. And I pulled it, we discussed it briefly, and then we voted. And again, there was no bylaws, there was no discussion of membership in ICLAY, what it meant, the membership criteria. None of those items were part of the discussion. And again, in the staff report, there was a coverage about what the, what it would take to do the greenhouse gases, to do an inventory, and that Silicon Valley, ICLAY, would be taking that up. So I just wanted to present that to straighten out the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grokot. Moving on to item number six, public comment. We have a few speaker cards. You're limited to two minutes, and this is for items not on the agenda. First up, we have Andre Carpio.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andre Carpio. I come from Emeryville, and I want to complain about the theft of my solar car by the San Carlos police. The San Carlos police emitted a memorandum which is kind of a non-good, because my solar car represents an array of patterns, and this is three European patterns, you know, here. See, one, and two, and three, plus an American pattern. So we talk here about intellectual property, theft of intellectual property, and you better take that seriously. I'm not going to let you get away with stealing my solar car and my intellectual property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Next, we have R. Jerry Lammy from the West Coast Farmers Market Association.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Jerry Lammy. I am the executive director of West Coast Farmers Markets. I live next door in Redwood City. I'm very, very interested in liking to bring a year-round farmers market to San Carlos. For the last approximately three weeks, I've been attempting to work with the planning commission, and to date have been told that there is no, nothing within the charter that would allow that. Farmers markets today are very, very popular. It's an opportunity for people within the community to be able to walk and buy their produce directly from the farmers. I am very familiar with your current farmers market run by the Chamber of Commerce. That's 20 weeks out of the year. This one would be year-round. I would love to do something like on a Saturday. I've spoken with Caltrain, and they are, they're willing to let me work with them on the El Camino, much like the one that's in Belmont. I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. I currently run a very successful farmers market in Cupertino, and I'm putting four or five more up and down the, this part of the peninsula right now. We're going into Brisbane, Foster City, Redwood Shores, Stanford, so I'm very familiar with what's going on, and I would love to work with the city and bring you a very successful year-round farmers market.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Glenn Jalino.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here tonight because latter part of last year, I submitted a public records request through the city clerk, Ms. Bowland, requesting all information that the city might have with regard strictly in any documentation. Inasmuch as Mr. Grokot just showed a video, which is quite timely, Ms. Bowland has confirmed to me that I've received all the information that you have, and I do not have a copy of the bylaws. It was not presented in the information that I received. In January, Mr. Mora stated that the council had received a copy of the ICLAY bylaws and had them to, and the city had them to review to become a member of ICLAY as an organization. Nowhere in the records that I received, however, are there a copy of ICLAY's bylaws. The record does not exist, and the material I received does not exist on your website either. Again, Mr. Grokot asked Mr. Mora at the January meeting if the bylaws had been provided to the council, and he responded in the affirmative. I could have accepted this as an oversight, but Mr. Mora answered Mr. Grokot three times with yes, and followed that with an emphatic statement that he had gone back and checked the staff report of 2007, the 2007 meeting, and the bylaws were there as an attachment. Mr. Mora's emphatic statement to me shows deliberate intent to deceive the council and the public regarding the true history of what the council knew of ICLAY before making their decision to join. I know that Mr. Malp would like to consider this as a personnel matter, but I feel it's a public matter. The council votes on issues affecting the city and acts as the public's designated representatives. When the council votes on information provided by Mr. Mora that is intentionally untrue, it affects the public and the public's trust in government. As a member of the public, I feel the council's been lied to, and I'd like to know what action the council's going to take to ensure the information provided by Mr. Mora is accurate in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Okay, moving on. It's all these speaker slips I have. Moving on to approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed. I have a request from the public for item 7D to be removed. Are there any requests from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar minus items D and F.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the staff would like to pull item H.
Item H, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a request for item G from the public.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Item G as well. Okay, so we need a motion for A, B, C, and E.
Mr. Mayor, approve of the consent calendar items A, B, C, E, and E.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, seeing none, we will start with item 7D. We will, is there a staff report for this?
There is a staff report. The staff can certainly give one.
Well, before we get to that, let's do the public comment first. Ms. Bonnie McClure.
Item 7D.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. I have more of a question than a comment, and that is, I wondered why we were letting this contract now before we know whether Transit Village and Wheeler are actually going to go. And it's been through the scuttlebutt that we would know maybe by May, and so I'm just wondering, you know, what contingencies are going to be made for this update? Because an update to the old report is one thing, but then are you going to have extras to do studies for Transit Village and for Wheeler? Are we going to be doing by the EIR? So these are questions really for staff and to make it clear to us, because I'd hate to see them get an initial contract and then we get jacked on the extras.
Thank you, Bonnie. Staff?
I actually had a conversation earlier today with two council members on this item who both raised some different points as it relates to the downtown parking study that I think are all valid, and I think also relate very much to Ms. McClure's comments just a moment ago. And I might suggest to the city council, this item was envisioned, I think, over two years ago by the city council. It's been in the capital budget for some time as we move it forward, and my take is that there might be some changing preferences on this particular item, and that's not to say that the council may not still want to pursue a downtown parking study. But one suggestion I have is to perhaps not approve this contract tonight, allow the staff some time to convene the parking subcommittee to do a little bit of brainstorming about what this project might entail in the future, and then have the staff come back and give a presentation to the city council to set a little more updated direction as to what we're trying to accomplish with this project, which may result in the staff needing to issue a new RFP if the project changes substantially. I do think that there are a number of changing circumstances and projects out there that we may want to consider, such as the Transit Village and Wheeler, but there are also some other areas of parking issues that weren't discussed by the council at the time that I think some of the new council members may want us to take a look at, too. So if that works for the city council, you might discuss that briefly, give us a little bit of direction, and then we can just continue this item to the future, give us some time to meet with the subcommittee.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments? Are we okay with the city manager's suggestion?
I agree with the city manager.
Me, too.
I'll make a motion, if you will, to not authorize the city manager to execute the contract pending further recommendation by the city manager to pursue the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clark?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 7G, adopt ordinance 144, amending chapter 816 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, private alarm systems. We have a speaker card. Louis Scampini?
Lois.
Oh, Lois Scampini.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lois Scampini. I live in San Carlos. I hesitate to take up too much of your time because I have already given the letter to the city council, so I won't repeat what's in the letter. If you have any questions, though, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think we can't really do Q and A during public comment, but we all did receive your letter, and I imagine we all read.
Okay. I would just then stress that the only portion of the proposed ordinance to which I object is that portion amending section 8.16.030, imposing an annual fee on alarm permit owners, when the original rationale for the alarm permit fee to wit the terminal alarm system provided for in the current ordinance no longer exists. So while in the past, when there was an alarm, an annual alarm fee required for terminal alarm systems, owners were able to connect directly to the police department, thus mitigating the necessity for private monitoring. That no longer exists. It seems to me if the service no longer exists, the fee shouldn't exist either, and that's basically the gist of my position. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just by way, a point and order. This is an agendized item, so the council can ask questions.
No, we can't ask questions of the public, is what I was saying. It's not a dialogue. So, Mr. Malp, who do you have from staff to answer? The chief of police is here. Chief Rothaus?
Yeah. We are currently, right now, with respect to the annual permit fee, and that goes annually, we don't have the alarm systems that go directly to the police department anymore. But it doesn't mean that it doesn't cost us anything to maintain an alarm system and monitor alarm system, to enter information into the databases, to change information into databases. There's still costs associated with, significant costs associated with alarm response, and another cost is we do allow on a first alarm for people that that alarm will be free. Response is not charged for that first alarm. So the fees go to cover the whole breadth of the program, and right now we're in the process of studying the annual alarm fee. We may, we're looking at that fee. We could see staff bring forward a change to that annual fee, and so those are my comments.
Okay. Are there any discussion or questions from city council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Although, Chief Rothaus, my question may actually be better answered by Mr. Rubin, so I'll leave it up to the two of you to decide who will answer it. As I understand the point being made by the member of the public, it seems to me the argument is that the ordinance itself and the language in the ordinance is not consistent with assessing an annual fee, and I'm paraphrasing that obviously fairly substantially. And I just would like to get some clarification on the language of the ordinance and its history, and did it allow it, have we been, you know?
Well, the prior ordinance did not have an annual fee. It had an initial fee, and the purpose of the ordinance initially was to manage the cost of responding to false alarms. And then part of the component of the earlier ordinance was that there was this alarm terminal fee that did have an annual fee attached to it. So what we're trying to address is a situation where we have a lot of alarms in the city that we don't have any way of tracking those alarms, and when we get a false alarm, we don't have any way to charge for an excessive false alarm, which is the only one you can get a fee on. We have no way to track those charges. The fee is actually going to be set based upon the principle of the cost of administering the program, and we haven't done the fee study for that yet, so we don't have a fee. This ordinance itself doesn't set the fee yet. You will set that later by resolution when you adopt your next fee ordinance.
So as I recall from our earlier discussion, effectively what we're looking to do here is to update the ordinance so that it, in fact, does support the notion of having the costs of the program paid for by the alarm owners, I guess, for lack of--
That's correct. So there's two components, just to be clear. One is the cost of registering and managing the program and the cost that that entails. Anecdotally, I think that that's probably not going to be a large cost, because that part of the program is just to maintain-- part of the program is just to maintain the addresses that have alarms, in the universe of alarms, that, that could have false alarms in the city. And then the, the false alarm fee is going to be probably a fee similar to the fee that's been assessed previously. It's going to be the cost of the officers responding to a false alarm. And then there is an exception for the first false alarm.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1444 dash, or I guess, is there a dash to that or no? It's 1444. An ordinance to the city council, the City of San Carlos, authorizing amendment to chapter 8.16, the Municipal Code, regarding private alarms.
Is there a second?
All second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 7H. Second reading of an ordinance amendment to the San Carlos Municipal Code, chapter 1032, stopping, standing, and parking, section 1032 to 10Q, two-hour areas, St. Francis Way. That's a staff report. Or Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a, a quick typographical error that was caught earlier today in the, in the actual ordinance itself for this report. If you look at the recommendation of the staff report, in effect, I should say it was caught by Councilmember Grisilli.
He was just taking credit for it.
Thank you very much, yeah. I, I saw the smile. Just caught it out of the corner of my eye. If you look at the staff report, under the recommendation section, where about halfway through that short paragraph, it says two-hour areas, St. Francis Way, the southeast, southwest, and northwest section of St. Francis, from Laurel Street to El Comunal Real shall be two-hour parking, except the 100 feet west of El Comunal Real, which shall have no parking restrictions. It's the except portion that is left off. If you turn to the ordinance 1445, where it reads under section 1Q, St. Francis Way from Laurel Street to El Comunal Real, it should read from Laurel Street to El Comunal Real, with the exception of the 100 feet west of El Comunal Real, which shall have no parking restrictions.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember. Can you please read the entire title?
Yes. I move acceptance of the second reading of an ordinance amendment to San Carlos Municipal Code, chapter 1032, stopping, standing, and parking, section 1032 to 10Q, two-hour areas, St. Francis Way.
Thank you. It's adopting ordinance 1445, just so.
Adopting ordinance 1445.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As amended?
As amended.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 8A. Reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They're informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. First up, we have a report to council on RDA dissolution status and activities of the oversight board to city as successor agency.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Mark Suwicky, Economic Development and Housing Manager. As you know, on February 1st, all redevelopment agencies in the state of California were dissolved, and on that date, by operation of law, all assets, properties, contracts, leases, books and records, buildings and equipment of redevelopment agencies were transferred to successor agencies. On January 9th, the city council adopted a resolution affirming that the city would serve as the successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, in which capacity the city will wind down the affairs of the former redevelopment agency at the direction of an oversight board. On February 27th, the city as successor agency adopted resolutions, adopting schedules known as the enforceable obligation payment schedule, or EOPS, and the recognized obligation payment schedule, known as the ROPS. Both the EOPS and the ROPS are lists of outstanding obligations of the former RDA and the months during which payments for these obligations are required. The successor agency may only play, pay, and will only be allocated tax increment by the county controller for payments and obligations listed on, on these schedules. The ROPS was submitted to the county controller, which directed an external auditor to review and certify the ROPS as to its accuracy. The auditor began this review on March 19th, and is expected to, actually, they did deliver their findings later today, and sent them to the oversight board and the successor agency. The ROPS must be submitted to and duly approved by the oversight board for the successor agency. By April 15th, the first ROPS must be submitted to the State Department of Finance and the state controller. The oversight board approved ROPS must also be submitted to the county and posted on the agency's website. Once all of these steps have been taken, the ROPS becomes valid and the EOPS will be superseded. Conversely, until all of these steps have been taken, the successor agency continues to make payments under the EOPS. The successor agency is also required to dispose of assets and properties expeditiously and in a manner that maximizes value. Effectuate the transfer of housing functions and properties to the city or the city's housing authority, and otherwise wind down the affairs of the former RDA. The successor agency must also prepare an administrative budget for the oversight board, oversight board approval, in order to pay administrative costs, although there is no time period provided in law for, for those actions. The first meeting of the oversight board was held on March 19th with six of the appointed members, six that were appointed to date. Actions taken at that meeting included electing Jim Porter as the chair and Paul Scannell as the vice chair, respectively. The board, the full board of the seven members met again last Friday, April 6th, and approved engaging Gary Baum, a former Palo Alto city attorney, to provide legal counsel to the oversight board, and thus avoid any conflicts of interest that may arise with the city attorney or the successor agency's council being the advisor to those meetings. The board requested to meet again tomorrow at 3:00 PM, primarily to begin a review of the ROPS, so that it might possibly approve the schedule prior to the April 15th deadline. Staff has proposed revisions to the ROPS, but due to compressed timelines, has not had the opportunity to get the city as successor agency to review and approve these revisions. And at this stage, it seems to make more sense to determine what the oversight board will approve or not approve, and then return to the, to the city as successor agency with that schedule and have that approved, and send that off to the State Department of Finance and state controller. Available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Suwicky. Are there any questions? Mr. Grisilli?
I just said, Mr. Rubens, I, and again, I know technically, I don't, I hope this is not a conflict of interest, maybe Mr. Suwicky can answer the question. So when you say approved by the city, so it doesn't have to come to the city council, then?
It will come to the city council as, in its position as the successor agency.
But you said, I thought that the deadline was April 15th.
It, there's a deadline of April 15th to submit something to the Department of Finance. If it's not approved, the advice is to just submit the draft.
I understand. I, I thought it had to be, I apologize. I thought.
Yeah. There's, there's a draft ROPS, and that's kind of the operative document right now. And that's what we would send, subject to approval of a revised.
Not a problem. It just sounded like that it had to be approved, and I was just wondering when we were going to be meeting to do that, so, thank you.
Well, the oversight meeting is meeting twice this week, if you want to come on and visit.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was there any discussion, Mr. Suwicky, any public discussion about the ongoing lawsuit between the city and the school districts, and how that interacts with some of the obligations and costs and whatnot?
There is an item on the oversight board's agenda tomorrow to discuss the implications of the lawsuit.
So perhaps I should attend that meeting?
Mr. Collins, do you have anything?
No, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Grocott?
I have a question regarding impressions, because I think the public is under the impression that we're doing what's stated in here. For instance, required, you know, where it says required to dispose of assets and properties. And in our city, of course, we've got the Wheeler Plaza project that was discussed. Property owners around the plaza are expecting that that project came to its demise with the demise of the redevelopment agencies. But, of course, that's not necessarily the case. And yet, even myself as a council member, I'm feeling a little confusion on what can be told to the public, what the public can expect, and what these businesses should expect, because they're trying to do day-to-day business, and not just day-to-day business, but future planning. And there's a lot that's up in the air. And, for instance, where this suit gets cleaned, they're next to the plaza. And every time I go in, she asks me, what's happening? Because it affects her and her husband's future. And they are running blind right now. And I would think that's the case for many businesses on Wheeler Plaza. So how much of this is public information? How much can these people expect to know regarding what's happening specifically with Wheeler Plaza vis a vis the RDA?
Well, I, I think, I think I can help answer that question. The, and the answer, I think, and staff can help me if I'm missing something, but the, the law, the redevelopment law requires the disposal of the assets, but there are ways that the assets do not have to be disposed of. And that's under active consideration to see if, if that's feasible. The law requires that any decision that you make with regard to the properties that the former redevelopment agency acquired as part of that Wheeler Plaza redevelopment project has to be reviewed by the oversight board, and that will happen. And the city council will also be reviewing the, that concept as well in open session. Right now, that's about all I can tell you about that process, but the, and I don't know if staff has any other input as to how, I mean, there is, the city has, in fact, acquired the properties, excuse me, the redevelopment agency did, and now as successor agency, the city has control over those properties. But again, just to be clear, it's subject to the oversight board and then subject to a review within three days by the State Department of Finance. That's how the new law works.
So the things that we discussed in, in closed session will be discussed in open session at the, at this board meeting?
It will be in open, that'll be open. That will not be a closed session when it, at the point it gets to the oversight board. And staff is planning on having a presentation for, for you about that subject matter. I think another reason is we haven't really agendized that part of it tonight, so, but it is slated to come back before you.
And then my last question for staff is, obviously, I've indicated to you that there are business owners who feel like they're in the fog. Has the city made any effort to reach out to them, to keep them up to date as much as you can with the information that you can share with these businesses?
I've spoken to some of the business owners, but without any clear direction as to whether the project is going forward or not, it's difficult to, to provide any more information than we, than we have, which is very little. It's, it's going to rest on the oversight board whether the project can, can continue or not.
And I said that was my last question, but this meeting, Mr. Rubens or Mr. Suwicky takes place, the next one where this is discussed is what was earlier presented?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe this is on the agenda for the oversight board this week.
Not yet, no.
Yeah. But, yeah.
So the oversight board will be meeting, but this is not on the agenda? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Suwicky. Moving on to item 10A. So for those of you who remember here at the beginning, we're going 10A, 10B, 11A, 9B, then 9A. So item 10A, consideration of approving amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix.
Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is an update on the city's strategic plan. As part of a strategic plan process, we'll provide the council and the public updates on the objectives on a monthly basis. This report will serve as the April 2012 monthly report. There are three requested revisions tonight. The first is the date to review and recommend to council for action the strategic property acquisition reserve policy as it relates to the sale of the RDA-owned properties from May 1st to June 30th. This will be brought forward in June when council reviews and approves the financial policies. Second is the date to review the investment policies from August 15th to August 27th. This, this date has been moved to reflect the second meeting in August, which is when the council approves the annual investment policy. And the final requested change is to move the date to present to council options to fund a feasibility study for reducing energy usage from April 30th to May 15th. There are two completed objectives. The first is the sewer system capacity assurance plan report, and the second is the update of the San Carlos Green Building Code and enhancement options. So in summary, there's three requested date revisions tonight. Two items have been completed, and all other remaining items are on target.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Is there any council discussion? Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, actually, just a quick clarification question. The green building ordinance review, we certainly had the review, but as I recall, we, we asked staff to do some additional work on it and bring that back. So will we be modifying the matrix to redo that, to recognize that when we actually bring it back, or do we mark it as completed and it shows up as a different iteration sometime in the future?
We can bring it back. I can adjust that.
Hey, Mr. Grisilli?
Nothing.
Mr. Collins?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Grocott? Mr. Olbert and I, we had discussed over the phone about possibly trying to add an objective tonight.
Oh, that's right, we did.
Yeah, so I guess I'll go for it. We were hoping to, I don't know if the rest of the council members are getting this, but one of the major complaints we're receiving in town right now is traffic safety in regards to the schools. So we were hoping, Mr. Malpe, we just, just so you know what's going on, we're hoping that we could have two sort of reports. One, a capital report on how much it would cost to improve safety around these schools. And I know it's going to be a checklist, and it would probably cost a significant amount of money, but if we could know what that overall cost would be, and that includes adding crosswalks, adding curbs and whatnot, we could start forwarding you the complaints as well. And the second would be for the chief to kind of give us a rundown on, I know we had that big traffic safety day where the deputies came into town and they, they wrote a, a large amount of tickets. If we could see what increased enforcement during those schooltime rushes would cost the city as well. So if we could get those two numbers, I think those would be great discussions for us to have. And if we could put that on the strategic plan, you guys can give us a date the next time, if that's okay with at least one other council member.
That's fine with me.
Okay. So we have majority of the council saying that's okay? And then, Mr. Collins, I believe you had something as well?
Um, I, I do. I would like to, this is really, probably falls under the category of long-range planning, but I would like to us to think about studying a crestview connection to Interstate 280 through the city-owned property that's up there. This item was discussed over 20 years ago. The land is still there. I think the need is there to alleviate a lot of traffic congestion concerns, particularly around Carlmont High School. So I'd like to see us put that on the long-range planning.
Is that okay with fellow council members?
Um, just, if I may, one quick question. I, actually, I think, you know, discussing it and studying it sounds fine. Is it actually within our purview as a city to, we can study anything, but I mean, the actual.
I think that's what the study would be. We'd probably have to do a request.
Okay. Is to figure out how to do that.
The feasibility of anything.
No, that sounds like a good idea to me.
Sounds like me as well, so, okay, if you could add those on, Ms. Mendenhall. Do we need a motion, Mr. Rubens, to amend it?
You would need a motion to amend, and then I think that following the chart, just a suggestion to, to have a date for the report, I think that's how that, they're usually set up.
Is it okay if we leave it open for city staff to come back with those dates?
That would be fine.
This is kind of all on the fly, so.
So it's a, right, I think that would mean it's a future item.
Well, we'd want them to come back with dates within this six months, or tell us that it's an ongoing future item, but give the staff a little time to get their head around it. So, Mr. Collins, you want to do?
So then the motion would be to amend, to add those as objectives, and then have staff come back at the next report to give you some dates. That would be feasible.
You can just say so. Moved.
I agree. So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Okay, moving on to item 10B, consideration for options and city manager to hold a planning retreat.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the City Council. Jeff Malpe, city manager. During the March 12th City Council meeting, as the strategic plan was being considered for adoption by the council, the City Council had a discussion about their desire to hold a, what I referred to in the staff report as a longer-range visioning and priority-setting retreat, or workshop, you can choose the, turn a phrase that works best for you. In the staff report, I tried to list a few items that have been mentioned to me over the last year, so they include discussion of staff involvement in setting goals and objectives during the six-month strategic plan, the update of the council's code of conduct and ethics, discussion of how items are placed on the council meeting agenda, discussion of the council about closed-session meeting times and, and city council meeting times and dates, discussion of longer-range things such as relocating City Hall, widening Holly Street or acquiring property to widen Holly Street over what's envisioned to be a long period of time, the storm drain issues that we had a study done that I believe are generated a price tag of approximately $40 million several years ago, primarily in the White Oaks area, and aquatic center, a high school in San Carlos. These kinds of things that really don't fit very well into a, a six-month matrix, but would require a little bit more, I think, visioning and thought on the, on the part of the council to determine if they thought it was something that they wanted to begin to expend staff time and resources to, to pursue over a period of time. Those are just an example. They certainly can be broader than that. The council asked the mayor and I to get together and generate a list of options. We've done that in the staff report for you. They range from conducting such a council retreat as part of the same day that we do the six-month strategic plan. That would allow you to take advantage of some professional facilitation through Merrill and Snyder or another firm that would already be conducting the strategic plan during the lunchtime hour, or an expanded lunchtime hour as a second alternative. We've also indicated, based on the council's comments at the last item, two council members wanted to just go with the existing strategic plan unchanged, so we listed that here, and then we added an item that would be a broader standalone, could be a day, up to a day-long retreat. Here in City Hall, the council, in their discussion on May 12th, felt like they wanted to do that without the use of a facilitator. If that's still the case, we could work with the city council to schedule such a retreat in one of our city facilities as soon as the month of May, I think.
Okay, and just to add my two cents, and because I work with Mr. Malpe on this, you know, we did look at the council discussion about this, and this is something I think we all want to get behind one way or the other. So, that's why I think we brought up the different alternatives. There were some who didn't want to do an entire day, some who didn't want to do anything at all, and then there was this negotiated kind of like, let's do the luncheon. And if the luncheon, the only problem with the luncheon that I see is it doesn't make sense, because if we're going to want to change a strategic plan retreat, we're going to want that to happen prior to the strategic plan retreat. So, the only thing I'd like to add on, Mr. Malpe, is we could do it as a breakfast prior to doing the strategic plan retreat. So, if we come to any significant changes, those will affect the retreat going forward, so we won't do another six months prior to the changes. But just my two cents, I think the, the alternative doing, instead of luncheon, I think breakfast actually makes more sense. Doing that, I think we could probably get all behind, but I'll leave it up to the discussion of the council.
Um, yeah, I'll just, you know, if, if the general will of the council is that we do something like a breakfast, I certainly could get behind that, because I think that having the discussion is more important than not having the discussion. My own preference, actually, would be that we meet separately on a different day, but not for an entire day. I, I'm not exactly sure where that, that idea came from. I was envisioning, you know, a one- or two-hour kind of discussion at least to start it. If there's more that we want to talk about, there's no rule that says we can't get back together again. The advantage, I think, of doing it on a, a separate day is a little, is keeping things a little bit distinct in people's minds, and providing an opportunity for a little bit more thoughtful, reflective discussion amongst the governance team, the, the five of us, and as I had indicated, I personally would also like to see Mr. Malpe, the city manager, involved in the discussions as well. So, those are my two cents.
Okay. Mr. Grisilli, do you have anything?
I would, I would go along with either having it, as you mentioned, either the breakfast and then having it, or as Mr. Olbert said, as long as we could limit, I mean, it's not a matter of limiting, but it's a matter of time to have it a couple of hours, set aside a couple of hours, but I believe a whole day is, would just be way too much overkill, personally.
I'm not really a fan of all-day meetings. I'm still working, so. I would, I would go for a dedicated meeting. I like Mr. Olbert's idea of setting up a separate meeting, so then if we decide that, you know, there's, we need more time, we need another day, we need to incorporate it in the strategic planning, we need to be fine.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
I too would like to see it be separate, and the reason being, because even if we did limit it to a certain number of hours, I think having a meeting where we're not squeezed by the fact that we're going to go into a strategic planning meeting would be helpful, and being that this is the first time we would do this, it would feel more comfortable to not have that wall that we would be up against, and it would give us the chance to be relaxed, have the meeting, see how it goes, see what comes of it, without having, like I said, a commitment later in the day that, and if we did the two together, it would certainly be an all-day affair, and I agree with Mr. Collins, those, you know...
Okay, so it looks like what we're hearing is we want a separate meeting, but we want to limit it to two hours.
With no facilitator?
With no facilitator, yeah. And we would invite the city manager as well. So, Mr. Malpe and I will go look at the calendar, and we'll bring it back to you guys.
We'll have the, we'll contact you through the city clerk's office to look at meeting dates.
Different dates.
And we'll, we'll throw in some weeknights and probably, or weekdays, I would imagine, and maybe we'll aim for around the lunchtime, right, Mr. Malpe?
Yeah, and the city attorney just raised a good point. Would you like the city attorney to attend?
I imagine it would be good for Mr. Rubens to be there, yeah. So, okay, moving on then to...
Well, you can never have enough lawyers.
Item 11A, consideration of increasing staffing levels for the position of firefighter, firefighter, paramedic for the San Carlos Fire Department. Deputy Chief Moppen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Excuse me. Stan Moppen, your deputy fire chief. Before you tonight is a recommendation from Fire Department staff on increasing the FTE count by three additional firefighter, paramedic positions. The current staffing model for the Fire Department is 21 personnel in the operations section, which includes the fire captains, firefighter, paramedics, and the firefighters. This allows for seven personnel on duty each day with a minimum staffing of six each day. The additional personnel on duty in those days is used for coverage of vacancies created by scheduled absences. What we, we're recommending is the addition of three additional firefighters to put daily staffing at eight for a total FTE count of 24. What this does for us is this gives us the flexibility to react to any unscheduled leave that comes up, things like long-term disability, retirements, resignations, those types of things, without us having to go into an immediate overtime spending to cover these vacant positions. The associated costs of this are currently in the budget allocated for $454,600 for overtime. The projected cost of three additional personnel will be $382,800. What we're requesting is the shift of that $382,000 out of the overtime fund into the FD, into the salary fund, and then adjusting the overtime fund to $100,000, which would require $28,200 addition to the Fire Department budget. One thing that has been noted in this recommendation is that this is a long-term vision for this staffing to solve a staffing problem that could potentially occur. The department is still, as you are well aware, in a transition to a fully staffed department, fully staffed and fully qualified personnel, so the full impact of this effect would not be felt for at least probably approximately 12 months. I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for the deputy chief? Mr. Olbert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief. The, two questions. One is, my understanding of the, the training process that firefighters have to go through is that from a cash flow point of view, basically, we would be hiring folks and paying them for some period of time as they were undergoing training before they were actually available to take positions and therefore reduce overtime. Yes. So, that effectively, there would be a period of time when costs will simply increase because we've hired new, new positions, and then eventually costs will go down as you're substituting the positions once they've been trained for overtime. Do we have any insight into what that sort of bubble looks like?
Time-wise, we're looking at approximately 12 months to, could be up to 18 months at this time. One of the things that we're doing, we're seeing is that, of course, some of the training that occurs prior to them coming on shift, and then some of the, the training that occurs while they're on shift working, but not fully qualified to cover 100% of their duties while they're on, while they're working.
So, so, I guess when, when I sit up here and I'm thinking about the financial implications, in part, I should look at this as an, we're making an investment.
Yes.
We're making an investment in increased staff, and it will pay off eventually, but we will have the investment to undergo first before we, we get the payoff.
That's correct.
And by the way, my question is not meant to imply not supporting the idea. I think there's a whole, you indicated in, in your cover memo, there's a whole bunch of great reasons that have nothing to do with money that we need to do this, which is mostly having to do with the safety of firefighters and the quality of the work, you know, because of the overtime load. I, I will just make, leave it with, with you and staff. I personally would be interested in, in getting some financial numbers put on what that investment phase looks like, just so I understand what it is we're getting into. The other question I have, it's probably a little bit too early to tell, because as you pointed out, we're still in the process of ramping up and establishing a new organization. But do we have any insight as to what is driving the overtime need that we're looking to replace? Because I guess what I get at is, you know, I, I have heard of instances where we have, you know, we have turnover in staff, and, and turnover can be caused by lots of different things, but if there are things that are causing the turnover, which we are then hiring additional positions to deal with, maybe there's a way to deal with the things that are causing the turnover directly. So, I'd be interested in getting whatever perspective you might have to offer on that.
Well, currently, some of the, the issues we're up against, as we, like I said, with the transition of the fully staffed department, is certainly the workload on the current staff. They're being, they're working very hard and a lot of long hours while we get the, the staff this year currently, again, fully qualified. We can have a firefighter start on day one, as you're well aware, but not qualified to be a standalone paramedic or a driver of an apparatus, those types of things, and those take, does take quite a bit of time. So, certainly, the workload that's being, that's being put onto the firefighters is quite extensive right now, and that's one of the beliefs we're looking for out of this proposal. Beyond that, projections on, on the turnover rate of the, of the Fire Department, we, you know, we haven't experienced a high turnover rate just yet. We've looked at two personnel who have departed the department for other, other opportunities in other cities, and I think that's really what we're looking at, is as folks see other opportunities, they, they'd look for those.
But it's obviously something that you're paying attention to as part of your management of the staff?
Very closely, yes.
Very closely, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the deputy chief?
Just one. Mr. Moppen, I, I think you might have answered it, but I didn't see it in here. What's the timeline that you anticipate it'll be to hire these three firefighters? Was it over a 12-month period?
The hiring of the firefighters can be anywhere from three months to six months, depending on the process we get through and get the actual folks hired. The second phase of hiring the firefighters, so is getting them qualified to really provide us the relief in their positions. To have a brand-new firefighter only gives us a minimal impact initially until we get that person into, again, the fully-staffed, standalone firefighter, paramedic. A driver-operator is, takes quite a while, takes up to 18 months to train, but usually we can get it within the 12 to 18-month window. But there is a time before the full impact of those positions is felt.
And you have a number of applicants right now, I assume?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Is there any public comment? I don't have any speaker slips. Seeing none? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Open up for discussion or a motion.
You know, the, the only point, Mr. Mayor, if I'm, I, I just think this is, I personally support this proposal. I think this is a good thing to do for all the reasons that have been outlined, both in this presentation and in the memo, but I do think we also need to recognize as a council, we are committing to an additional level of expenditure here, which will eventually pay off, but we are going to have to figure out how to balance that through the budget process, you know, for the first three months, six months, whatever period of time it is. But I still think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Olbert. Is there anything else? We will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the increasing staffing levels of the firefighter slash paramedic.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, and now moving on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. We are going to start with 9B, which is to consider resolution approving a levy of stormwater national pollutant discharge elimination system, NPDS, charges for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the City Council. As a condition of a joint NPDS permit, which is a federal program, the city of San Carlos joined all the other cities in San Mateo County on a water management plan in the early 1990s, and as part of that, the idea was that the program, we would be able to charge fees for the program to implement all the things that we need to do in the city to conform and, and reduce flooding and pollutants that would discharge into the storm drain system. And so, that's what this, this allows us to do. We've charged a fee for this since 1994, and it's recommended that the council adopt this resolution to be able to levy these fees so that we can implement the NPDS program in San Carlos. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Grisilli?
No, I just wanted to point out that it's a $20 fee, and it hasn't changed. I'm not sure it's ever changed, has it?
That's correct. It hasn't changed since...
From 1994 to the same, it's the same cost, $20.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sivay. I have no public comments that's on this, so we will, if there's any discussion.
I think if there's no public...
Oh, yeah, sorry, we have to, we have to open a public hearing? There you go.
Open a public hearing?
Now you have to make a motion to close it.
And if there's no public comment, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
For a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposite? Well, it doesn't matter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2012-dash...
21.
Resolution of the City Council, the city of San Carlos, approving a levy of stormwater charges, national pollutant discharge elimination system for fiscal year 2012-2013 in accordance with Chapter 13 Point 16 of the San Carlos Municipal Code.
For a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Member Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item, item 9A, public hearing to review a planning commission decision approving conditional use permit and architectural review for Carlos Club expansion 612 Alcino Real, accessory parcel number 150133090. Mr. Malpe?
Good evening, again, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council.
Mr. Mayor? If I may, just as a, a quick procedural question?
Yes.
I recall being advised at some point that, that at some point in this process, council members ought to indicate if they have had contact with individuals who are the subject of this, and I just wanted to ask a question about at what point we would be disclosing that.
You can feel free to disclose it during your comments, right, Mr. Rubens?
Yeah, I think before, during counseling, your comment would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and just for the public, the way this is going to work, the city staff is going to do their presentation, there'll be question, Q and A from the city council. The applicant has been given 40 minutes for his presentation. There'll be Q and A from the city council as well. We'll go to public comments, then we'll go to discussion on the, for the council. So, Mr. Malpe?
Good evening, again. This evening, we're hearing the, the council call-up of the Carlos Club proposal to expand their business into the back parking area to create an outdoor dining and nightclub facility located behind their current establishment that would increase capacity size. This evening, or I should say rather, this was heard several times by the Planning Commission in 2011, 2012. It was approved with conditions by the, conditional use permit was approved with conditions by the Planning Commission on March 5th. On March 12th, on a 3-2 vote, the council asked staff to agendize a call-up of that particular item, and that's what's on your agenda this evening. We've worked hard to minimize the timeframe and the impact to the applicant, city staff, and the community to hear this particular item. I'm introducing it tonight because I feel this is a fairly significant item to some. The expansion of the Carlos Club may seem like a rather small land use decision, but from a public safety perspective, this, this expansion of a nightclub in the downtown of San Carlos is one of the most significant land use issues I think this community has faced in, in the last decade. I'd like to emphasize that the staff's evaluation of a proposal which more than doubles the occupancy of the Carlos Club from 88 to over 200 is in no way meant as an indictment of the existing business, its owner, its management, or its clientele. The staff's concern with this proposal isn't related to the overall design, the use of certain materials, outdoor live acoustical music, or the introduction of food service. Staff is comfortable with most of these elements as mitigated by the planning commission. Rather, our concern about, is about the well-being that's been documented, these ancillary impacts associated with a typical nightclub, which the chief of police and the community development director will talk about more specifically tonight in their presentations. The city's current zoning, which has been vetted by the council, the planning commission, and the public, does not allow for such an expansion and requires a conditional use permit or CUP, which you'll, Councilmember Grisilli, if you'll forgive me, if you'll let me use for the remainder now of my comments here, because as a community, we've previously recognized that this type of land use issue, particularly in our downtown area, has inherent impacts on the rest of the community outside of its, inside and outside of its business footprint. It's not the staff's intention to single out or disparage the existing business in any way. The Carlos Club may be one of the most well-run nightclubs in the Bay Area, or it may not. That's not really for the staff to decide, that's not the issue that's being discussed this evening. Our focus is on what the impacts of the club have been on the community in the past and what we might expect to see from an expanded club in the future. The idea to approve a trial or temporary CUP for one year has been raised as a potential solution to the current impasse between the staff and the applicant. In fact, such an approach was recently, excuse me, endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce, if the council felt so inclined. I'd take a moment to disagree a little bit with what was in the chamber's letter. The chambers asserted that they had heard from both sides on the issue. While true that I spoke to the chamber board and answered questions about the project from the staff's perspective on the project at a recent chamber meeting, I was never informed by the chamber that there was even a possibility that they were considering either endorsing or opposing the project. I regret the fact that we were not given the opportunity to have the chief of police, the city attorney, or the community development director present their full presentation to the chamber before such a decision was made. If the council elects tonight to move forward with the approval of a CUP, they'll be granting a new property right that runs with the land for all time and is not linked to the existing owner or the current circumstances of the nightclub. While a CUP can be modified or revoked in the future by the city, it would be in the entirely new context of limiting or revoking a previously granted property right, and this is no small matter. In fact, when we look to other communities which have or are currently dealing with the limitation or revocation of existing bars and nightclubs as a result of negative ancillary impacts in many cases, we find these circumstances often lead to costly litigation and bitter public battles. As a result, the staff has taken a long-term and impartial view of what we believe the future impacts of such a project will be, and in the case of the Carlos Club's proposal, we are not able to recommend all the findings necessary to the council to approve this project. In addition, the staff is unclear how we would be expected to evaluate the success or failure of the club's ability to comply in the future with conditions of a permit, since most of the staff's strong concerns relate to ancillary impacts, which stem from the club but are often outside of the club's business and property, and the staff is already well-documented as part of the public record on this issue. So if the council goes down that road, we will be looking to the council for some assistance in trying to identify how we would, as staff members, evaluate this conditional use permit in the future for potential limitations or revocation based on any conditions approved. Finally, I'd like to say, I've had the opportunity over the last six months to talk with many folks in the community about this project. Some of them have been in favor, many of them have been opposed. I've asked over and over again the following question: Why would residents of San Carlos want an expansion of a nightclub in their downtown? Such an expansion is not a permitted use under the city's existing code without an exception, being granted with a conditional use permit. Such a use draws heavily on our limited public safety resources, including both police and fire. Such a use is currently subsidized heavily by the San Carlos taxpayer by providing disproportionate share of safety resources to deal with the ancillary impacts of the use while drawing those same resources away from the rest of the community. And in every instance, few, if any, people that I talk to about this could really offer any reasons why, as community members, they would want to see such a project expanded in their, and use expanded in their downtown. Now, I know my comments may seem out of character for a city with a strong reputation as a building-friendly city. We did discuss that. I understand that the chamber board discussed whether or not we were a building-friendly city and felt that we were so, or business-friendly, rather I should say, felt that we were so business-friendly that that issue didn't even justify a formal reply. But as I said at the beginning of my statements, I feel strongly that this land use issue is one of the most significant issues that the city's faced in some time. As a community, we've invested heavily in our downtown. The downtown's a source of great pride to those that live and work in San Carlos. There's no doubt in my mind whatsoever that the ancillary impacts of this proposed project will have a detrimental impact on the overall health and public safety of the downtown as well as the San Carlos community. I'd ask the council to consider the words of the city's mission statement and vision statement when weighing its decision tonight. The city's mission statement reads that the city of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities in a fiscally sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster a safe and healthy community. The vision statement, which was just updated by the city council recently, reads, "By 2017, San Carlos will be a vibrant, family, and business-friendly community admired as a great place to live, learn, work, and play." I strongly recommend that the council deny the application of the Carlos Club tonight. With that, I'd like to call up Mr. Al Savay. I'd also like to let you know that our city attorney, Greg Rubens, is available for any questions that come up during the staff's presentation or anytime tonight on the findings or the process that we're going through. Al? Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council, and thank you, Mr. Malp. Tonight, I'm not going to concentrate a lot on the architecture or the noise. I'm going to run through the history just a little bit, but I'd really like to concentrate on the conditional use permit and some of the reasons that the city staff is recommending denial of this application. So in terms of the history, I think Mr. Malp covered it very well. There was a considerable amount of discussion at the planning commission level. They had three meetings. Commissioners expressed concern during their meetings with safety of patrons accessing the site. They're required to walk through the alley, safety of queuing of customers outside the patio walls, some noise issues associated with the use and expanded operations, the number of people in the patio area, and the resulting overall expansion of the nightclub activities. And the commissioners' review was extensive, as I noted, and focused on the architectural details and the noise impacts. The commissioners felt the design modifications that were made over time through the commission process addressed the increased security and addressed their onsite and architectural issues. There was a noise study that was done, and the noise study found that there were no significant noise impacts. In terms of the site itself, this shows the location of the site along El Camino Real. It's located right here. This is the Carlos Club building, located out here. It's served by an alley, and the alley goes all the way through from Laurel Street to El Camino Real. And then the parking area is located at the rear of the building, and it's adjacent to the alley here. And the alley has two-way traffic, and the city's parking lot, Clark Plaza, is located at Alt Disher.
Mr. Savay, you just stated that that alley has two-way traffic. That alley's one-way.
Well, people enter it in both directions here.
No, they don't. It's one-way all the way through.
It's one-way. It's marked as one-way, but sometimes people do enter both ways. And that's, I can tell you from personal experience that that's--
That there was actually a DUI thrown out because of that.
And, but you do have two-way traffic in there. You have bicyclists, pedestrians, and such. In terms of the old zoning, this, this application came in as part of the old zoning, which was a commercial service, and the old zoning required a conditional use permit for the outdoor area, and the property is about 7,800 square feet, and the existing building is about 2,200 square feet. The facility operates from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Friday, and 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Saturdays. The facility has a DJ and karaoke, and also has a Class 48 license from the ABC. It's a 48 alcohol beverage control license, and it authorizes a bar and a nightclub, and it authorizes the sale of beer and wine and distilled spirits on and off the premises. It's different in, from a restaurant in that minors aren't allowed, and restaurants have what they call a Type 47 ABC permit, and that allows for what we would consider a bona fide restaurant. The existing building has occupancy of 88 persons, and the applicant is requesting it used to be expanded into this patio area. So this is, again, taking a closer look, El Camino Real, the main door is currently here, there's access at the rear now. Here's the alley, and it does show one-way there. And this would be the expansion area. The outdoor patio area is about 2,670 square feet, and it would allow for an occupancy of about 178 persons based on the fire and building codes. However, the applicant shows seating here for about 96 people. The maximum combined occupancy, if you did it just by the fire and the building code, would be in the 240 to 260 range in both buildings. With the addition of entertainers, of security staff, and other staff, it's been agreed that the maximum would be, if it was used, it would be about 100 to 125 range. I'd like to talk about the conditional use permit. There's been a lot of talk about conditional use permit, and I think it's very important for all of us to understand what a conditional use permit allows and what authority the city has. A CUP allows the city to consider special uses which may be essential or desirable to a particular community, but they're not allowed as a matter of right. So some zoning allows you to just go into the building, but a conditional use permit, you have to meet certain standards. Another purpose of a conditional use permit is to enable a city to control certain types of uses that could have detrimental effects to the community. Cities have the authority, through your constitutional authority, to enact planning and land use regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of your residents. As noted earlier, conditional use permits run with the land, and that is where, where conditional use permits are concerned, all the related property rights and personal rights are transferable. So if you granted the CUP tomorrow, the applicant could sell the land, and the CUP would run along with it. There's been discussion about reviewing the conditional use permit after a year, and that's possible. The city council, there's conditions, you can apply to review a conditional use permit after about a year, but you can't discontinue it without a revocation hearing. And a revocation hearing is a fairly serious matter. It's very similar to what we're talking about tonight. It would require a public review by the planning commission and potentially the city council. Also, in state law, if you're going to revoke a conditional use permit, it assumes that, let's say, a year later, the applicant has made improvements to their business, spent $100, $200, $300,000, and if you revoke that use permit, then it could be found as a taking. You could, it could show you would have to pay the applicant back for the things that were invested in that business if you ran into that situation. So why is city staff recommending denial of the conditional use permit? I'm going to talk a little, in fair amount of detail about why. And to obtain a use permit, the applicant and the city generally need to show that the project is in compliance with certain policies and terms in our zoning and general plan, and that such use would be desirable or essential for the public convenience, welfare of the community, wouldn't impair the integrity and character of the city or the zoning district, and, again, wouldn't be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So the city must agree in writing to this. We have to put this in writing, and city staff makes recommendations to the planning commission and city council. We are required to then put this in writing to you, and that's something that we've had a lot of difficulty doing, and I'll tell you why. In consideration of this, of the finding that we showed on the screen, there are a number of impacts that we've evaluated and talked about as part of this, a part of this project, and they're noted there, and I'm going to talk about some of the key impacts. Once granted, one thing to consider is that this CUP would set a precedent for other businesses in the downtown that may want to expand in the same manner. There'd be an expectation that the city would grant them a CUP as well, and that other businesses might feel discriminated against if they don't get the same treatment by the city. In terms of the experience with the current business, while there's every expectation, I think, and I think we've heard this, that the current business owner would do the utmost to make this the best fit for the downtown, there have been some recent issues with the operation of a food truck and movies and such that didn't have city approval at the adjacent, in the adjacent open area there that set the stage for potential problems in the future. But that's not to say that these would continue, and once they were brought up to the applicant, the owner, they discontinued these things immediately. So one other thing to consider is, I noted earlier, the current business owner might pledge to conform to all the conditions and the findings that are put upon the, on the project. The building, however, could be sold tomorrow. There's no guarantee that that would be provided. Maybe you could have some kind of a verbal guarantee from somebody, but I've seen where conditional use permits and businesses are sold shortly after it. It becomes a value that runs with the land. So let's take another closer look at the, at the site, a little bit closer look at the alley. Again, the entrance, the main entrance to the existing building is here. The alley would have this entrance into the side area here, and this is the city parking lot located in this, in this area, and this is looking from El Camino Real into the site. And here's the front door that I noted, and here's that alleyway, and this is the general location in the back here. And in the daytime, this is what the site looks like. This is looking from Clark Plaza, this is the city's parking garage, or parking lot. These are the backs of the businesses and the backs of the buildings here, and you can see the open area and the existing Carlos Club building. At night, things are a little bit different. The appearance of things takes on a different characteristic, and so I just wanted to give a showing of the evening. So one of the, the findings, that finding that I showed you earlier, the first part of that finding says that we have to look at the location of a use and determine whether it's an appropriate location. This is, as noted, in an alley. It's not on Laurel Street, it's not on San Carlos Avenue, it's not on El Camino Real, it's not in the frontage of our buildings. This is a very unique and unusual location for a business where a lot of people would gather, and so this is nighttime looking out toward El Camino Real. So it's adjacent to this alley, and as everybody corrected me, this is a one-way entrance, but at night, sometimes people don't see that. They may enter here. You can come from the other direction, so there's traffic in both directions. It's adjacent to a public parking lot. Lots of things can happen in a parking lot. It's a public space. There's darkness between cars, there's darkness between buildings. It's behind the businesses. In other communities, we've seen that there have been incidents of vandalism at the rear of the buildings. It's in dark corners, this lacks visibility. I've heard this from the police department in the past, not necessarily for the business that is being proposed here, but in the other areas. And with a lot of people emptying out there late at night, it becomes a safety hazard and a potential for conflicts with cars and bikes and pedestrians. It's near Caltrain and El Camino Real, so in the late hours, people leaving the, the location there would go across perhaps to Caltrain, having to cross a major thoroughfare, going down our sidewalks and our streets and pouring into the city parking lots. So it's dangerous, as I noted, in its current location. It's a very undesirable and unusual location. Currently, there are a number of numerous police service incidents resulting from the existing Carlos Club expansion, and I-- existing Carlos Club expansion and I think the police chief may expand on these somewhat. This table is collected from the staff report and a memo that the police chief wrote. And patrons leave the club throughout the night, beginning in the evening, let's say 10:00 PM and at closing time with the expansion, there would be significantly more patrons going out into the alley and milling around where the cars are. Nightclub management controls what happens inside the club and they've assured the planning commission and assured city staff that they can manage what happens inside the club. As soon as the patrons leave the club, they become the responsibility of the city of San To illustrate the issues in the staff report, staff researched the experience of some other communities and to determine the possible and likely effects of the nightclub expansion in our community. And granted, while Walnut Creek and Mountain View are much bigger cities with bigger problems, some of their demographics are fairly comparable to the city of San Carlos and we can see some similarities there in terms of the direct result of nightclub operations on a larger scale and we have to ask ourselves, if we can see this occurring in these other communities, do we want to start down this path? With adequate promotion, people will come from all over the Bay Area to the Carlos Club in all modes of transportation and it will allow for twice as many people. Fighting and violent activity is documented and it's not uncommon. In fact, in talking to the other communities, it's gotten somewhat out of control. There are cases of public urination, acts of vandalism, driving under the influence that are documented here. The expansion of the Carlos Club into the parking lot, again, will more than double the people that are there now and we know that there's currently problems there. So we think, staff believes that we can anticipate and foresee that this will result in a significant increase in secondary impacts to the community that would affect the ability of the city to provide an appropriate level of service, of police service to the community. As noted by the city manager, downtown vitality is something that we should be proud of and with a significant intensification of the use, the city must be willing then to subsidize the costs of maintaining civic order as a result of intoxicated people letting out into the parking lot and onto the city streets and at all business hours. As noted on this, this is an illustration showing the existing number of people at 88 and this shows the proposed expansion. This is the 96 people that I noted earlier that would be seated in there, but it actually could go much higher and it's very likely that the secondary impacts would be a significant and detrimental to San Carlos and would affect the city's ability to provide an appropriate level of service to the entire community. City staff thus can't guarantee to the city council that the secondary impacts, public urination, driving under the influence, acts of vandalism, fighting and other potential acts of violence that would result from the nightclub wouldn't be injurious and foreseeable and a problem for the health, safety and welfare of the community as a whole. No matter how well-designed the nightclub expansion is, the safety of the general and broader community would be put at risk as a result of the proposed expansion because of these secondary impacts that I've cited here. For these reasons, the city staff finds that the public peace, health, morals, safety, comfort, welfare and convenience would be significantly affected by the secondary impacts of the expansion. So I concentrated mostly on the conditional use permit findings here. I'm available, as is other planning staff. There's other findings that we couldn't make in the general plan and those are contained in one of the attachments in your staff report. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seve. Chief Rothis?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Klein, members of the city council. Greg Rothis, police chief. I'm here tonight to talk about my view as it relates to the proposed expansion of the Carlos Club. This process started out, started out for me in a very routine manner. Review plans for new development or business expansion in the city, assess the public safety impacts and provide my input. The process became very non-routine when after an extensive review of the material I'm presenting tonight, I came to the conclusion that I would, for the first time in my more than seven years as police chief, oppose a development project. As you've heard already, the issue for the city is whether or not the proposed use will create a safety hazard, be injurious or detrimental to persons, property or improvements in the area and whether or not it'll be detrimental to public peace, health, safety, comfort, general welfare or convenience. Based on the information that I'll be providing you tonight, I believe that the project does not meet the criteria as outlined in the zoning code. It's important to start out my comments by noting, my role has not been to examine the Carlos Club in its current state and make recommendations on whether or not the business should continue to operate as it has. No member of staff, myself included, is challenging the Carlos Club as we now know it. The issue I'm being asked to examine is whether or not the club should be permitted to expand over twice the current capacity by creating an outdoor seating area adjacent to an alley bringing in live entertainment. Informing my opinion that this project would create a significant public safety threat to the city, I considered a variety of issues. The first issue has to do with the current police staffing levels. Police department is staffed at three deputies and one sergeant during any time the Carlos Club is open for business. We use that staff to patrol 82 miles of streets, 11,000 households, 28,000 residents, untold number of businesses and visitors and we respond to between 25,000 and 30,000 incidents per year. That's the staffing level and that's the workload on the police department. Incidents at nightclubs are different than incidents in many other places. Incidents at nightclubs involve oftentimes a lot of people, some drinking responsibly, many not drinking responsibly. When you send deputies or officers into those kinds of areas, you usually need to go with numbers. You're dealing with people who are not making good decisions as it relates to issues like fighting, resisting police and those sorts of things. Anytime we send deputies into something like that, we're sending them into a safety situation. So I considered that. Now bigger cities are able and staff so that they can respond to multiple incidents at multiple nightclubs and be able to handle that. This city is not. The other thing I looked at is the number of liquor licenses that we have in the city. You have that in your packet. San Carlos currently has 73 liquor licenses in the city. By contrast, Bowling Game has a little more, 97. Los Gatos, which is a very vibrant community, has a little bit more. They have 81. But again, with Los Gatos, their police budget is twice what our police budget is. And then Belmont and Foster, Belmont has 38. Foster City has 29. So we have a lot of liquor licenses as it is in the city. The ABC states that approximately 12 liquor licenses per census tract is a number that they feel is doable and safe. Anything more than that is an over-concentration of liquor licenses. So anything above 12 is an over-concentration. In the census tract that the Carlos Club is in, we have 52 liquor licenses in that census tract already. Now this isn't the proposal of a new license, but it is a proposal of an expanded use of a license. And the reason that ABC has this distinction is because they understand that there's a correlation between high concentrations of liquor licenses and high concentrations of crime and public nuisance type of activity. The other thing I looked at is the number of alcohol-related arrests that we make in this city already. As you know, I've traditionally compared us to benchmark cities, which I've stated already. They're very similar in makeup and size and all of that. So Bowling Game, we asked all of these cities for the number of public intoxication arrests in 2010 and they each gave us their number for public intoxication. Bowling Game was 24, Belmont 73, Los Gatos 93, Foster City 33 and San Carlos was 132. So what we know then is that benchmark, these benchmark cities deploy as many or more officers than we do and yet we're dealing with considerably amount already with everything status quo, more, you know, more alcohol-related arrests in these cities. And we're diverting a disproportionate amount of our police resources in its current state to these types of activities. The other thing I looked at is the incidents that occurred at the Carlos Club, at the premise. To determine the activity level at this location, we conduct what is called a premise search, which is a search of our database. To conduct this search, we plug in a specific address. We can plug in any address. In this case, we plug in 612 El Camino. And we view a specific period of time and it gives us a list of incidents at that address. So in preparations for tonight's meeting, I looked at all the police reports and I looked at every other incident that may not have required a report at the Carlos Club and I got as much information from those as I could. And this is what I found out. One of the 131s incidents is unlikely attributable to the Carlos Club. It was a one arrest that occurred in front and it happened when the Carlos Club was closed. 1:30 in the afternoon, the Carlos Club doesn't open till 2:00. The other thing I want to let you know is that many traffic stops, pedestrian stops and bike stops at their location are likely attributed to the Carlos Club. They're occurring late at night when nothing else is around and I know from speaking with the deputies and you heard from Mr. Seve tonight, that that is a one-way alley, but that's not always a one-way alley. People often go through that alley the wrong way and we make traffic stops related to that late at night for people going to the Carlos Club and going to and fro. But it's possible, obviously, that not all of those traffic stops are related to the Carlos Club or pedestrian stops. So in fairness to the Carlos Club, I ask that you be mindful of that during your decision making tonight. However, I can confidently say that all the other incidents I looked, linked to club activity and I've looked at all of them. Up until this point, what's happened is I have stated the number and types of incidents for you to give you an idea of what's occurring at the Carlos Club. But up to this point, the council has not had an opportunity to get a flavor for what does that mean when we say a disturbance? What exactly is occurring at the Carlos Club? So I took some of the incidents and I wanted to share those with you tonight, when and where they're occurring, how we found out about them and what kind of incidents are we talking about. On a Saturday at 1:30 in the morning, a deputy was conducting a passing check and saw a subject urinating into the alley, standing against the south wall of the Carlos Club. The subject was obviously intoxicated, too drunk to care for himself and he was arrested for public intoxication. On a Sunday at about midnight, the Carlos Club called us of a subject being uncooperative with security and that subject was too intoxicated, cared for himself and he was arrested for public intoxication. On a Wednesday at 11 o'clock at night, during the passing check, a deputy saw a subject walking south down in the alley behind the Carlos Club towards a business to urinate. That person was too drunk to care for himself and he was arrested for drunk in public. On about 12:30 on a Thursday morning, during a passing check conducted by a deputy, they were monitoring the crowd toward the rear of the bar and saw a couple exit the bar. The deputy saw a male push the female to the ground. She got up, she started walking and he pushed her down again. The suspect was arrested for domestic violence. At about 1:30 in the morning on a Thursday morning, a deputy witnessed a verbal dispute between two parties and they were asked to leave the area. One of them returned, created a disturbance inside the Carlos Club and they were arrested for public intoxication. On 2 o'clock on the Saturday morning, we were dispatched to a couple involved in a domestic dispute on the south side of the Carlos Club. An intoxicated couple were involved in this dispute. One of the parties was arrested for battery after the deputy observed injuries to the other party. At 1 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday morning, victim reports that she was inside the Carlos Club at a party when somebody sucker punched her in the face. At about 1:44 in the morning on a Saturday morning, the Carlos Club call us and a suspect was detained by security for trying to start fights with people. The subject was struggling with security staff when we arrived and he was too drunk to care for himself and he was arrested for public intoxication. At about 1:10 in the morning on a Saturday morning, passing check, a deputy saw a vehicle that was parked against the south wall of the Carlos Club, backing to another car. The subject was intoxicated, he was arrested for drunk driving. At about 1:30 in the morning on a passing check on Saturday, a deputy saw an intoxicated subject in front of the bar and watched the subject throw a liquor bottle into traffic on El Camino. That subject was too drunk to care for himself and he was arrested for public intoxication. At 1:30 in the morning on a Sunday morning, deputies conduct a couple arguing in the rear parking lot of the Carlos Club. Deputies calmed them down and sent them on their way. Moments later, several patrons behind the bar shout to deputies that there's a fight on the sidewalk in front of the bar. They arrive and they see blood running from the face of one of the parties and they arrested the offender for domestic violence. And those are the flavor of some of the incidents that we have seen at the Carlos Club and this is, and I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to hear what was happening there. But when considering the premise history at that location, there are some shortcomings with respective premise history. There's actually four pieces of information that the log that we're showing you can't really determine. The one thing that the log can't determine is incidents reported to or initiated by police that are attributable to the Carlos Club, but that did not occur at the premise location. So that could be incidents at the Caltrain lot, incidents on El Camino, traffic stops of people pulling away, people arrested for drunk driving in another city. These are things that we can't possibly track in those incidents. Another thing that those incidents caps cannot capture is incidents that occurred at the Carlos Club, but were not reported to police. And I know from talking to members of this community, and you're going to hear some of it tonight, that there is fights and incidents that occur inside the Carlos Club and were never called and were never aware of those fights and incidents. The third piece of information that this can't find is that incidents that are attributable to the Carlos Club outside the area of the Carlos Club that go unreported. So we know if there's incidents inside the Carlos Club that are unreported to police. Is it likely to believe that there may be incidents just outside the Carlos Club that go unreported to police? And I think that they are. And the last bit of information is that the deputies do not call in everything that they see. Every passing check is not called in, every minor disturbance is not called in and there's incidents that they just don't, whether it's at the Carlos Club or any other place. But I can't say if it's significant in any way, it's likely to get called in by the deputy. And I want to say a word about the spot checks or the passing checks because that's a statistic that was challenged in terms of its validity and in terms of what is that, why are we doing that? Is this kind of padding the stats? Well, you saw from what I just read earlier about the incidents that occurred to the Carlos Club, that many of those incidents occurred when the deputies are conducting their passing checks. They're conducting their passing checks because they know things happen there. I gave two incidents in the staff report. These are recent incidents. One had to do with a deputy conducting a passing check and seeing a subject recently urinating on a wall. He was too intoxicated to care for himself and taken to jail. Another passing check was when a deputy was going to passing check in the Carlos Club. He looks at the door and two bouncers are carrying out this guy who's fighting, being uncooperative. They carry him, we take him into custody. We have two deputies there. Despite the fact that we have him in custody, he's still challenging people to fight. You can take a look at that incident and it seems like the Carlos Club's security staff did a good job. He was apparently not behaving himself in the club. They didn't tolerate it. They kicked him out. No indication that they used excessive force. They did everything that they had to do, but now all of a sudden, he's ours responsibility because they're outside the club and they can't police outside the club. So that's an example of people leaving and they're going to leave and they're, once they leave, they don't, the club isn't responsible for them, once they're off that. It becomes a public safety problem to the general public outside of the club and that's where the secondary impacts occur. So I asked some questions as it related to this person. If we went there, what was going to happen to him? Where was he going to go? Was he going to drive? Was he going to ask some more people to fight? Were they going to call us? And those are questions I don't have the answer to. The other thing I considered is first chance bookings as it relates to drunk driving enforcement. There has been, in San Mateo County, persons arrested for driving under the influence and public intoxication and being under the influence of drugs are often taken to a non-secured detoxification facility known as first chance. Anyone who's released from first chance is asked a series of questions and one of those questions is, where did you have your last drink? Of the 472 people responding to this question, 97 were able to name a specific bar or restaurant. The Carlos Club had 10 responses and only one bar, the bistro at the Crown Plaza in Foster City, had more responses. They had 12 responses. There's been some issue about whether, how these stats are. These are June to July stats. I have copies of them. I'll provide them to the city clerk so that you can take a look at this and I also have extras, copies for the applicant. This is the second time at least that the Carlos Club has appeared on this list with first chance and I want to say also too, with relate, as it relates to these DUI bookings at first chance. The first chance bookings only represent a segment of the drunk driving population in this county. It does not take into account those booked into jail, those involved in accidents or those never apprehended by police. The other concern, the other thing that I took a look at was it relates to this club is something that Mr. Seve talked about at length and that's the location. The location of the Carlos Club is adjacent to an alley with vehicular traffic. It's adjacent to a busy street in El Camino and despite the fact that there is patrons standing outside in that alley, vehicular traffic is still going to go back and forth and we know in some cases that those traffics, those people could be intoxicated, driving, leaving the club and there's people standing out there and that's not a good recipe. The other issue with respect to the alley, and you saw it in the incidents that I accounted, many of those crimes and incidents that occurred, occurred in the alley, not in the Carlos Club. That the alley is dark, there's many places that are hidden out of view, it's conducive to criminal activity, it is a place that you can commit to criminal activity, it is a place that you can commit crimes, at least at some level, and not be seen, whether it's drug use, fighting, or a variety of things, and feel like you can do that and kind of get away with it. And we're talking about increasing the Carlos Club's capacity by more than double, and I ask that we please not forget, there are people who live back there. They live in apartments, but they're residents of our community, and they're going to be subject to the noise of almost 200 people at various levels of drinking, some responsibly, some not responsibly, being let out at the Carlos Club once at a midnight departure and once at a 2:00 a.m. departure. Some of the arguments that you might hear tonight, and I just want to talk about, is the planning commission passed this, and so the council shouldn't second guess the planning commission. But we know from members of the planning commission stating they did not believe that the public safety, some of them was in their purview to look at. So we know that part. But if the council doesn't want to take a look at the second guess the planning commission, then who's going to look at public safety? So that's a recipe that just says public safety gets dropped, and that can't happen. Another thing that we heard is that the club will never fill to capacity. By all indications, you know, the applicant is a good businessman, if it was your business, would you want to fill it to capacity? I think through all indication, the Carlos Club will do everything they can to fill that to capacity every night. They probably won't, but they're going to try to through marketing and promotion activities. They want the club filled, it's a business. They're not going to give directions to the staff, let's only fill it to two-thirds capacity. The other thing you'll hear is if they bring in food, maybe it'll make things better. Let's give them a chance and hope for the best. I've actually heard that part. But hope is not a very good public safety strategy. We can use it implied in our own lives if we want to. If I want to leave my car unlocked and somebody steals my stuff, I guess that's my business. But when we are the caretakers of the public safety of others, then I don't believe we have that right to use hope as a strategy. Now, if there was no data related to the Carlos Club, maybe we could use hope. We don't have any information to say otherwise. But you heard tonight, there's a lot of information to say otherwise. There's incidents occurring at the Carlos Club that are injurious to people, injurious to public health and public nuisance, and we want to more than double that, or looking at more than doubling that. Last thing I ask you to consider is that you might hear that the police chief is out to get the Carlos Club, and it's personal. It's just not the case at all. It's just not the case. If I was out to get the Carlos Club, I would have taken action against the Carlos Club. As a police chief, I've never taken action against the Carlos Club. I've never called the ABC on the Carlos Club to refer them to the Carlos Club. I've never sent police reports to the ABC. It's just not happening. I'm not against the Carlos Club. What I'm standing against is an expansion that they want to do that we have no obligation to approve. That's what I'm standing against. And I'm doing it because that's, it's my duty to look at public safety impacts and give my best objective decision. And again, this is very new to me. I've never done it before. The applicant, I just want to close and say that the applicant for this expansion project is asking the city to more than double the capacity of a nightclub, place more than half of those people in an outdoor seating area that is adjacent to an alley, and further request live entertainment. The council is being asked to approve this in spite of the fact that we know that the current capacity levels create the need for an appreciable level of police response for a variety of offenses that include public drunkenness, urinating in public, drunk driving, vehicle accidents, assaults, and domestic violence. If this project is approved, it would be proved with a reasonable likelihood of a significant increase in the types of activities I've discussed earlier. Given what is outlined in this memo and in my prior memo, I believe that it is questionable whether or not the strategies we use to police the current Carlos Club will be effective for this proposed larger venue. With the added activity level that this project would bring, it is possible that the San Carlos Police Bureau in its current configuration might not have sufficient resources to effectively provide police services to all areas of this city. With bigger cities, while bigger cities can have problems with their bars and still have units available on the street, a small bureau like San Carlos could be completely absorbed by bar activity, leaving the rest of the city uncovered and subject to excessive mutual aid requests, delayed response times, and a general deterioration of public safety. You are being served by the largest police department in San Mateo County and have the benefit of the resources of that larger agency when you need them. But we don't have a right to create a situation that makes us overly dependent upon mutual aid when we knew or should have known that that was going to occur. So for the reasons I've outlined tonight, I recommend the city deny the application request, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Malby, is that all the staff presentations?
That is Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll do Q and A from staff from the city council, and then we'll go into the applicant. Who wants to start? Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I've just got just a couple things of staff.
Mr. Seve, Mr. Ralthus, if you guys could just sit a little closer, because I imagine this is going to go to.
This is for Mr. Seve or Mr. Malby. If Mr. Duncan had approached you and said he wanted to convert his facility to a full restaurant, what would the city's response have been?
Well, I think from my perspective, that would be, it's a little bit hard to answer because that proposal isn't the proposal that was made, but take for example, that proposal is made all the time in San Carlos. We have new restaurants going in throughout the city, you're all familiar, I think we've got one opening next week, don't we? And so I think from a staff perspective, that's a completely different proposal. I don't want to speak on behalf of the planning commission who would likely get involved in that process, but I think it would, my concerns would be dramatically less than what they are today.
If I could answer from a planning perspective, a restaurant, a true restaurant, is a permitted use, and it doesn't require a conditional use permit, and it would also most likely require a different kind of liquor license from the ABC, again, that type 47, where you'd have a bona fide restaurant. And what some other cities do to determine whether you're a restaurant or not is to ask to look at the receipts that the restaurant generates to see how, you know, much of the receipts is for food versus alcohol, and some cities set limits and say, well, you have to prove that 70% of your sales are for food to prove that you're a restaurant. So perhaps that answers the question.
Okay. I think my other questions are for Chief Ralthus. You said that you've been the chief here in San Carlos for seven years, and I know you've been in law enforcement for a long time. I believe you were in Menlo Park for a long time?
I was.
Do you ever remember any kind of a project such as this, an expansion of a bar or something, or anything similar to this being proposed in Menlo Park or any other city that you've worked in?
I don't. Doesn't mean it didn't happen, I just don't recall whether or not I've faced an expansion project in the past.
Okay. And then the other question is, I don't mean to pin you down, but on any given night, what kind of calls do you have, say, to the patio bar, the orchid room, or the office, or Clooney's, or Pudley's? How do they factor into this?
Clooney's used to keep us busy when it first opened, and it's really mullied out quite a bit. The other bars are mostly not problematic, but the office is heating up a little bit.
I'm sorry, the last?
The office is heating up a bit, it's getting us a little bit busy.
Okay.
There's starting to be activity at the office as well.
That's all the questions I have for now.
Okay. Mr. Grokot, do you have anything?
I think the last one I had just got answered by Mr. Collins' question. I was going to ask by comparison restaurants with 47 and clubs with 48. I think that's what you're asking, right? First question, I don't know who would answer this, maybe if anybody has an answer for it, staff. First one is that if the Carlos Club was sold, and I think Mr. Seve alluded to that when he was making the point that the CUP goes with the land. So let's say it was sold, would the owner have to disclose to the buyer the process through which the conditional use permit was permitted? In other words, what I'm alluding to is, when you sell your property, when you sell a house, for instance, if you've had problems with that property, even if you've had problems, for instance, I was told one time regarding calling in to the airport roundtable office regarding noise disturbances when I used to live at 280 Shepherd, I was warned, interestingly enough, you do that, and when you sell your property, you have to disclose that airport noise is a problem at your home. So I'm wondering, you know, since this has been a less than easy process for Mr. Duncan, if he sold his property, would he have to disclose to the buyer, look, I have a conditional use permit, this is what I had to go through to get it, and it wasn't easy, and so forth?
Well, the use permit would need to be disclosed as part of the title of the property, so it would go with the title, be recorded as part of the title of the property. You know, it would be a good idea for one owner to tell a new owner what their experience was, there could be buyer's remorse. I mean, you hear about that in the residential market, hey, they didn't tell us. So you would think that, I don't think there's any legal requirement that I'm aware of, perhaps our city attorney could give us some additional information, but, so it'd make a good business decision, of course, to tell people what you've been through, and if you were a good business person, you'd probably ask around town before you bought the business.
The rule, Councilmember Grokot, you're talking about is in the Civil Code. That rule is a specific statutory rule for residential property, and there's a real estate transfer disclosure statement that's required in residential properties. That disclosure requirement is expanded to such things as airport noise and other particular factors. There isn't a similar law in the Civil Code that's specific to the type of process you're talking about, but, you know, there's a general common law rule that sellers are required to disclose material facts that might affect the purchaser's decisions. So if you're asking my opinion, that would be something that potentially would be a disclosable item. I can't say, you know, it might be less significant way down the road, it might be more significant more recently, especially if the project were approved and you put some sort of review considerations in it.
Thank you. The next question I have is that the graphics we've been given show, and actually what was put up on the screen there, the graphics show seating for dining and a kitchen to serve that dining. If this were approved, does the dining and the kitchen have to be put in and used? Or could the Carlos Club say, that's great, we got the conditional use permit, maybe we're going to put in the kitchen because we want to serve, you know, some kind of appetizer food, but we really don't see the need for the seating. We'd rather have a big dance floor, we're going to have entertainment, and it would be just a better business plan for us, come to think of it, that we don't have the seating. We're not really going to treat this like, you know, have as much restaurant quality to it as much as we're going to have dancing and entertainment. Could they do that if they, once they had the use permit? And they've expanded, you know, they're expanding the area, right, so, and the capacity?
The use permit, and staff can correct me if I'm not getting this quite right, but at the planning commission level, the planning commission approved a use permit, and there wasn't a condition that food be served in that conditional use permit that the planning commission approved. So the short answer to your question is that once the use is approved, as long as it's consistent with the use that's been approved, there can be some reconfiguration, remodeling, there's a lot of flexibility once the grant is provided.
If I may follow up though, would the flexibility extend to the point of, we're not going to put any tables in at all? Because again, you know, let's say I'm Mr. Duncan, and I decide I just want to have entertainment, and, you know, people can go over to my kitchen and get food, but they can stand there with a plate in their hand and their drink and so forth.
Yeah, my understanding is that's not a condition of approval that the tables and chairs be in the patio area.
One of the other things to consider is that over the years, it may be that a place goes from owner to owner, and over the years, the tables get removed. Who's there? Who is to know from a historical perspective, from a staff perspective, what the original use permit said? It could be five years away, you have a different staff, nobody's here, you don't know the faces, they don't know what was approved. And so that happens in a lot of cities. No one says anything because things just occur over the years, and something may occur, and then you've got to go back and do the research. So I've seen it where businesses do fluctuate and change and morph into other things, but there's nobody there really policing it, there's just too much to do, and there's staff turnover.
And Councilmember Grokot, I might just add one clarifying point. There is an overall capacity limitation that's based upon the fact.
Right, I understand that. Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Seve, do you have any questions?
Chief, I had just one question, one comment. You indicated to Mr. Collins that, you know, obviously there are other locations in the city that have incidents probably somewhat similar to what you described in your list, not the quantity, but these things happen throughout the city. It's not just at one location in our city that all these things happen. There are people who unfortunately get intoxicated at restaurants or other places.
That's correct.
Okay. The other question I had was, do you have any empirical evidence or even just a feeling of whether these incidents that are recorded, that you recorded, have increased in the last three years?
No, I don't.
Or decreased?
I don't. And what I've done is to use the last year's worth of data and the last year's worth of data only. Because it's more representative of what the Carlos Club is currently doing, and I think that's a better snapshot. Whether it's increasing or decreasing, I honestly don't know, but I know what's gone on in the last year.
Right. Now, again, I was just trying to get a feel if you did, it's getting worse, it's getting better. Obviously, there's more calls throughout the city, as you mentioned, because of all the, there have to be, because of all the new restaurants and all the licenses, there have to be, it seems to me, there would be more calls throughout the city than there were five years ago, I would assume.
Yes.
Okay, because just the quantity. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess the other questions I had were more for the city attorney, just looking at the conditional use permit. I guess, could we put a use in there or something that we would want to close the alley? I mean, I know this has to go through process, I guess, but close the alley from El Camino to the end of their property? In other words, you know, a T's there. There's the alley, the north-south T's, and then you go right or not if it's closed. So there wouldn't be an egress or an ingress from El Camino Real?
Yeah, I think that's probably beyond the scope of this application because there's a process that would be required to close off the alley.
Okay.
And it raises some other issues about whether or not it's an abandonment or, but it would be, I mean, the alley could be closed through a process.
Right, through a process, but not necessarily through this process.
I'm not sure a condition on a use permit would be the way to go.
And the food area has a separate entrance on the, from the alley?
The proposal is to provide all of the access from the alley.
Okay, so in other words, if you're going to go into the food area, you're going to enter through the alley?
Yes.
It's a separate entrance. But because it's a 48 license, people under 21 could not go through there?
That's right, it's 21 and over only.
Because it's considered sort of an add-on to the Carlos Club's.
Yeah, well, it's using the same liquor license.
Same liquor license, okay. It's the liquor license that designed, not the entrances or not the walls or anything else.
That's right.
Okay. Could we put it on the conditional use permit? You know, there's certain things that we might be able to put on, trying to, it was mentioned, how do you quantify whether they're doing a better job or a worse job? Could we put metrics on arrests?
That would be one standard that you could apply. There may be others.
Okay, but that's, you could theoretically do that?
Well, I mean, it's still, you could theoretically do that, but I don't think that would be the one measure you could use because there could be a lot of different factors that would lead to that.
And I say arrests, I mean, that's a wide, you could break that down a million ways, but, okay, it might be hard to do. down a million ways, but, okay, it, it might be hard to do. Are we allowed to change the, tonight, if we wanted to, or if, let's say the applicant agreed, to make the addition smaller?
That, that would be, you know, it, what, what you're doing is, is looking at the findings for approval of a use permit tonight, and staff's recommended, recommendations that you, that they can't recommend to you that you could make two of the, of the findings. If you, if there are conditions that you feel as a council member that would be added that would enable you to make the findings-
Mm-hmm.
Those could be reviewed, and if, if any of those types of conditions come up, I'll, I'll try and comment on them tonight for you.
Okay, so I can, we could come up with a million, but you, you'll comment on it specifically?
I'll comment on them, and then, you know, because of the, the nature of, we don't have a, necessarily a resolution for approval based on the findings, so I, your, your choices are, just to kind of step back a little bit, you do have the option of upholding the planning commission's decision-
Mm-hmm.
As, as it stands, you have the option of approving the use permit of your own making, because this is essentially a de novo review of the planning commission's decision, meaning we are revisiting it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's as if the application is, is here before you tonight with, with that record, that's, that the planning commission review and the facts and circumstances in that record included, in addition to what you have tonight. So that's one, the second option is to craft your own use per, your own use permit.
Well, we could craft our own, in theory. Could one of the, again, I just come out of whatever here, could we craft one that would say there'd be no loitering in the alley? Nobody could be, there was a picture that was shown up there, I don't know whether it was on a street, or whether it was an alley, or wherever it was, whether it was Walnut Creek or Mountain View, whole bunch of people standing around. Could we make a, make a conditional use permit that nobody can do that in that alley? So that would require, that would, to me, to my mind, that would require the staff of the Carlos Club to sort of identify that nobody can do that.
Right, well, I mean, they would, you could have a condition that would put, that would require, I mean, I, I'm just, just kind of describe what you're getting at here, but this, patrons queuing to enter the, the bar nightclub will be on private property, for example, you could, you could put that kind of a condition. But it is still a public alley, so it'd be sort of hard to police how, you know, who's in the queue line and who's not in the line, who's just passing through.
Well, no, I'm not talking about a queue line, I'm talking about just people standing around.
Yeah, no, I don't think you could condition this project with that, because it's still a public alley and people would be-
Okay, again, I'm, I'm just asking the question, because there was a picture showing up there that, you know, had an assumption, perhaps, and I was trying to see if that assumption could be put this way.
But there may be other laws against loitering, and for safety reasons, the police could regulate that, but-
Sure, those are all I have right now, sorry, thank you.
Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, one of the benefits coming at the end of this is that all the good questions get asked already, so I thank my colleagues for asking most of my questions. I did have one question, which I believe will be for Mr. Sivelli, and that has to do with, both you and Mr. Malphey had alluded to, and by way of examples with, I think it was Mountain View, the experience in Mountain View. You had touched on the notion of the enforcement and oversight dimension of conditional, of complex, what I thought of as complex conditional uses, or at the fringe conditional uses. We spent a lot of time tonight hearing from Chief Rothaus about the law enforcement, enforcement side of things. I'd actually like to get a little bit more education on what are the practical, real-world consequences that your peers deal with when, because we could hardly be the only city who's ever dealt with this kind of issue, where there was a similarly difficult conditional use permit that was granted, and what were the consequences of that, outside of law enforcement?
Well, I can talk about my experience in Mountain View as the deputy zoning administrator and the zoning administrator, and working on, with downtown businesses, and I started there at the time that, that the Limelight nightclub, which is one of the examples I provided in the staff report, was still in operation, and it had gotten to the point where the community approached the city about, and the press, about some of the issues that were occurring on the site. That site had, was closer to some residential areas, so people were videotaping the kinds of occurrences that, that happened, and were showing those videotapes to council members and city staff. This particular place did have a conditional use permit, and we tried to, we spent hours of staff time, resources, city attorney's time, meeting with the, the property owners, and they were new at the time, and they had their own notions about their operation and their business, but there, there were some very significant issues in the public realm, out in the parking lot, very similar to what we talked about. So it was, you know, we started with the business owners and just tried to kind of work with the business owners, to, to work within the parameters of what was there, but over time, that didn't occur, and so it becomes like an exacerbation of, you know, and frustrating situation for both parties. And at some point, you, you know, it, it ratchets up. The, the staff would then, if, if you would give them maybe a threshold, to some threshold, I think Councilmember Sivelli mentioned, you know, some threshold, some thresholds, but if those thresholds were crossed, or the, the, the police behaviors continued, then you'd have to get into rehearing of the conditional use permit. So that's what we did with the Limelight, we opened up the use permit for consideration of revocation. At that point, it gets very serious, the city attorney gets heavily involved in the process, everything you do is, is, you know, you go over it with a fine-tooth comb, and then perhaps the owners bring in their attorney. So you're eating up tremendous amounts of staff resources and time dealing with the singular issue. So then, you know, whatever process the city has, you begin the public hearing process, you work with the business owner through the process, if that, at, at certain levels, we got to the zoning administrator, the applicant wasn't agreeable to the conditions, and it got, the zoning administrator's decision on the conditional use permit was called up to the city council, and that's where things got to this level that we, we see tonight. In, in the case of the Limelight, additional conditions were added to the project, but the, the business owners felt that they couldn't operate within the constraints of the, the thresholds that were put on that, on that conditional use permit, and it did result in a lawsuit against the city. Eventually, the lawsuit was settled, and I began to work then with a new business owner who wanted to open a legitimate restaurant called the Monte Carlo, which is, I believe, is still in operation there. And, you know, we were very concerned with the Monte Carlo coming in because of all the, of the issues that we had had with this other business. We worked very closely with the ownership of the Monte Carlo, and were able to craft a use permit that they could work within, and, and they were, it was, it's a restaurant. So the business model changed so significantly that the, the issues that we had before went way down. And so that's my personal experience that I had with that business in, in Mountain View.
Well, I'd also like to ask if you could comment, based on your, your professional experience, too. It occurs to me, in any of these kinds of discussions, it's, it's relatively easy to sit up here in a panel room and come up with all sorts of clever ideas on how we can, we can do things, metrics we can establish, and thresholds and whatnot. I wonder sometimes to what extent those things are actually, let me call them useful and actionable, from sort of a staff's point of view, at the end of the day, and, and I'd just be interested in whether you, any of your experience sort of shed some light on that. Are there things that we need to be careful about avoiding? Perhaps it, is your experience that that kind of tinkering causes more trouble than it, than it tries to solve, whatever? I'd just like to hear what your perspective is.
Well, I think that you can, you can certainly do the best job that you can, and look at what has, has been done and worked in other communities with other businesses. We've seen improvements in certain businesses with onsite management, you know, maybe they didn't have enough personnel to manage what happens inside the club, but really, in the cases of these, we have had success, I've had success with businesses in this community and others, working with the management on security issues that deal with what happens inside the club. But again, the ancillary impacts, the problem is that the bouncers typically don't chase people into the parking lot, out into the alley, it's too risky, there's a number of different reasons. So that, that's been my experience, is that it's what happens in that public realm that's so difficult, and really, it's very simple. You know, planning staff, we don't, we don't have the badges, we can't go out there, we can look at things, we can take data, we can take readings and report back and work with the other departments, but it really comes down to who has the ability to work the exterior security and do law enforcement, and it comes down to the fire department, the law enforcement people, sometimes the building officials. So that's really what it comes down to.
I'd like to weigh on that, just, just really briefly, if I may, because it's been one of my big concerns in this. To the extent that the council comes up with a lot of additional measures in the conditional use permit to monitor the activity, the ancillary activities related to the club, my feeling is you simply will be creating a lot of metrics that'll help us quantify a lot of things that we already feel like are happening out there. The chief talked earlier about, you know, the types of incidents that aren't being reported, some of the, probably a lot of it falls into the, you know, the litter vandalism, graffiti, all those kinds of little issues that you see in a, in a large crowd that's intoxicated to one degree or another, that's dispersing late at night, and we can spend a lot of time, a lot of staff time, tracking that and documenting it, but we believe that it's just going to lead us to reinforce the conclusion that we're already making and recommending to the council tonight, that this is, is not a, a good use for this location. But we certainly can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sivelli? I'd like you to bring up the aerial of the, that you showed in your staff report, if you could, I have a couple of questions about the site itself. I think you have one that's a little closer than that. Okay, well, that works. So, the Carlos Club has taken up, I believe, they have, what, 10 parking spaces in their parking lot as of now? 11 parking spaces? And so they're only going to have the three to the side, correct?
That's correct.
And one of those is handicapped?
That's right.
So they have two parking, parking spaces and a handicap spot, right?
That's correct.
So the times I've been there, the parking lot's never completely full, it's, you know, six or seven cars, give or take. All of those cars will now take up those two spots, and then the, called a Clark Plaza, spots right there? So all the parking will be taken up by just the general parking that they normally have with their 88 percent occup, or 88 person occupancy, correct?
Right.
Okay. The Carlos Club gets a lot of taxi cabs, you know, on a given night, especially with, you know, and that's just with the 88, if we're going to go to 200, I imagine the taxi cabs would probably double. So you're going to have five to 10 taxis queuing up, you know, from midnight to 2:00 AM while they're, while they're open. Where are those cabs going to go?
Wherever they can find parking, and that could be in front on El Camino Real or in Clark Plaza.
But in front of the Carlos Club-
And there is one, I believe, that's designated in front, or on the side of the building for a taxi cab, so there is one-
One designated for a taxi cab. El Camino Real is red striped in front of the Carlos Club, and it's a bus stop.
Right here, so they would probably go further down, where there, I believe there is some parking.
Okay, is there any worry that they're going to queue up in the alley?
I mean, it's a possibility.
Because they do tend to just linger there now, so I imagine that would probably just remain the same, but there would just be more of them, correct?
It's a possibility.
Okay, and then in regards to the restaurant itself, you're not allowed to smoke where food's being prepared, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're not allowed to smoke where food's being prepared, right?
That I do not know for sure. Lisa?
The city's smoking ordinance would prohibit smoking within the building, as well as within the patio area, so you would have to leave the facility in order to smoke.
Okay, so Mrs. Faye, do you want to walk back up? Thank you, Lisa. So if there's about, and I would say roughly, again, about five to 10 smokers outside in the parking lot with the 88 occupancy, let's say that just doubles from 10, in between 10 to 20 smokers at given times, where are they going to smoke?
Human nature, wherever they decide that they, and typically people smoke, this is from personal experience, just watching folks smoke near the entrance, around the entrance-
Which is the alley?
In the alley, yes.
So we could have 10 to 20 people smoking in an alley that has taxi cabs as well?
It's possible.
Okay, okay, well, and then my other question to you is, you mentioned in your report, if there's a taking, the agency must pay the applicant for that taking. So if the Carlos Club was to do $400,000, let's say, what, pick a number, of enhancements to the parking lot area, and then was to break the conditional use permit, and maybe this is for Mr. Rubens, and we decided that we were going to revoke the conditional use permit, there's a shot that the city would have to come out of pocket to do that? And that doesn't include all the litigation fees as well?
Well, there's sort of an incomplete hypothetical, but the process would be, in order for a taking to take place, the revocation would have to be wrongful, and it would have to result in damages. But the, the revocation process, as laid out in the staff report, there's specific findings for that, and if those could be made, then, then, you know, I'd argue there wouldn't be a taking because the findings were properly made. That doesn't mean that there wouldn't be a lawsuit initiated against the city, or, you know, over that process, if-
Okay, well, Mr. Rubens, one more question then for you. It was brought up a lot when we decided to call this up, that a property should have the right to develop to its maximum potential. Currently, the Carlos Club does not have the right to develop this in this particular way, correct? We would have to give them that right.
Correct, that's what this process is about.
So if they, if they were to develop to their maximum potential, would not include this, correct?
The current entitlements are the current configuration of the, of the Carlos Club with the interior space, and the, and then the zoning administrator decision with regard to the parking exception, that's the, that's the state of the entitlements there. They do not have a right to convert that area into part of the bar nightclub.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Sivelli. Chief, I have a couple of questions for you. Ones in regards to the questions I was asking Mr. Sivelli, with multiple taxi cabs lining up, and possibly 10 to 20 people outside smoking, you also have a line area that I imagine would be taken up by patrons trying to get in. Is that going to be an issue for the police, just having that amount of people loitering about?
I do, I think it will be, I think, you know, you're, all the points you make are good ones, queued up taxi cabs, people who smoke, people getting out, and various levels of intoxication, again, some responsible drinkers, many not responsible drinkers, and I think there's an aspect of that, though, that is hard to predict. It's hard to predict what the dynamics of that will be, and, but you bring up good points with respect to those issues.
Okay, and my last question for you, Chief, is, and, and I don't know if you can even ballpark this, but the arrests that your, your deputies have made around, and the stops that they've made around the Carlos Club, are those primarily San Carlin's?
The arrests? No, they're not primarily San Carlin's.
So they're from out of town?
Some, many are, I think most of them are.
Okay, because there's been something that's been kicking around in public, and about some of the examples being used, saying, "Well, you can't compare us to them because they don't have the same demographic." But the demographic isn't the demographic of the town that's going to this establishment, it's, it's out-of-towners.
We have people, we know from people who were arrested, some live here, most don't, some live, we've had people from Washington arrested, Richmond.
So this is a pretty transient establishment when it comes to their patrons?
I just can, I can only tell you-
Based on the patrons that you've had interact, that you're managing-
Right, based on those persons, yes.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Mr. Collins?
This question is for Mr. Sivelli. When you were in Mountain View, and that Limelight case resulted in a lawsuit, do you have a, a guess as to what the legal fees were that cost the city?
No, but I can tell you that it took a significant amount of, of city attorney resources to do it, so I can't, I can't give you a number, but, you know, hours and hours and hours of, of city attorney time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we'll get to the applicant's presentation, Mr. Duncan.
just wanna refresh your memories. I've met with you, or we've spoke to you on the phone. I'm an eleven-year-old, eleven-year homeowner in San Carlos on Howard Avenue. I own two businesses in San Carlos, and I'm a part-owner in, of a business in San Jose. My car dealership has been on El Camino for sixteen years. I have deep roots in San Carlos. My father grew up here, and his sister Aunt Mary was Miss San Carlos in nineteen seventy. I brought this up. So, this is my Aunt Mary, and what my point is, is I've been here a long time, I have deep roots. This is my home. San Carlos is what I call home. So, I've made a large investment in San Carlos, in my residence, in my businesses, and I've made a huge investment in the Carlos Club. That picture of the front facade of the Carlos Club has remained unchanged. It's a historic landmark. The interior, what you see now-
Sorry, here I go. Sorry, I'm with ya.
-uh, is the investment I did. When I purchased that building with my brother-in-law and my brother, there's three of us that own the building, the building was literally falling down. Uh, I'm not sure how, I don't think, maybe you remember it, but the foundation had rotted away. There were places where there was no foundation. The building was ready to collapse. So, this building had been around since nineteen-ten, and to use a phrase we hear a lot, "public safety," that's what it was. It was a public safety hazard. What I've done is we put in a new building with handicap bathrooms, seismic upgrades, and a sprinkler system at a substantial cost. I did not have to do a sprinkler cost, sprinkler system. So, I brought the Carlos Club a second life. It's better now, I think, than it was before. The Carlos Club has been revived, however, I'm losing money. It's not your concern, it's not the city's concern, it's my problem. However, the reason why it's losing money is because the demographics of San Carlos do not support a nightclub. Nightclubs typically have a two-year run and go out of business or sale. So, my two years is over. I'm committed to a long-term investment and need a long-term business model. The only model that works is what I'm proposing today, and that's a restaurant. The staff report over and over and over again, until you're blinded in the face, is bigger nightclub. Nightclub, nightclub, nightclub. If you were to grab fifty successful nightclub owners and walk them into the Carlos Club, they'd look around and tell you it's a bar, it's a lounge, it is not a nightclub. It has dancing. So, this is not a traditional nightclub. This project that I'm proposing, a restaurant, will change the culture. It will attract a new demographic and provide a desirable destination for local residents. This business concept is a niche marketing concept. I believe restaurants today will not survive if they do not have a niche. I am serving an untapped niche. I'll cater to thirty-plus-year-old patrons that wanna eat, hang out, listen to music, dance, and also be in a unique, adult-only atmosphere, which is a License Forty-Eight. The definition of that is you must be twenty-one to enter. You don't have to have food. Food is optional, we will provide food. But, it's very nice, I know there's a lot of people out there delighted to go into an environment where they don't have children running around, playing tag, they don't have baby bounces, they can go to a bar and they're not gonna run into their kid. Nobody on the peninsula has this unique environment. I'll be able to cater to private parties, corporate events, which I have done, with food and entertainment. If you look at the building, can't see it right here, but, uh-
Just thought you was gonna-
-you'll, you'll notice that the, uh, the interior of the bar has-
Turn it back.
-a very small dance floor. So, again, the papers, the staff reports, everything is expansion, expansion, expansion. The real story is we're making the club smaller, we're adding a restaurant. The club deal does not work. The media and staff have misled the public, and now misled the city council with their staff report. The restaurant's been called glorified taco truck in the papers, food trailer, mobile trailer. The restaurant would be a permanent piece, a foundation of the Carlos Club. My ultimate goal here is to provide a safe environment that's fun and an asset to the city of San Carlos. This is a long-term investment. I've put in a lot, a lot of money before, I'm willing to put in more money for a long-term investment. I feel we've always worked with police, city planning, and been transparent and communicated endlessly. The amount of time spent on this project is amazing. This is my first type of city interaction, and the scale, the paperwork, the phone calls, the emails, the lawyers, the architects, on a small project like this, is amazing. Finally, uh, the other things we've done to address security and be proactive with having a safe environment is that we have three or four taxis on call. I bought a seven-passenger van, and we call it the Carlos Club Shuttle. We've used it to pick up patrons, we'll take 'em home. We have a security camera system. The police have come in and viewed it, I've made them tapes. We have a dress code, we have a more formal crowd with a dress code. We are proactive in having a safe environment. At, at this point, I'd like to introduce Una Consola, my architect, she's gonna walk you through, uh, design and occupancy.
Good evening. Six months ago, Fred asked me to work with him to transform an underutilized and unattractive parking lot into a desirable outdoor dining destination, and I gladly accepted. It has always been, since the first day I started this project, the intent, and Fred's intent, to add a new experience and a dining atmosphere to the Carlos Club, but not technically expand the club function. I'd like to walk you through the overall design and the occupancy as it's related to these, um, new design details. First of all, the existing club, as you can see, is on this side, um, you've already seen this plan probably several times. The usable occupancy of this space is eleven-hundred-and-sixty square feet for patrons. This is the dance floor, right here, it's not, two-hundred-and-ninety square feet. As Fred said, and we pointed out in the previous slide, it's actually quite a small dance floor. It really is a bar lounge atmosphere that happens to have dancing. They have DJs two nights out of the week. So, two nights out of the week for probably four or five hours a night, it actually is a club. Otherwise, it really technically operates like a nice lounge and bar. Outside, what we've done is created an expansion to the club, but only by means of adding a restaurant. My understanding is that the conditional use permit, based on the two thousand and eleven zoning regulations which we applied under, was to allow for an outdoor dining area. My understanding is that if we wanted to expand the club, we could've come before the planning department asking to actually take this building and expand it to the full extent of this property. And that's not what we've done. We're actually not expanding the club, as it seems, we're actually adding a totally different experience and environment. Fred's master plan concept was to create a friendlier, brighter, more inviting place than the original club, for residents and people visiting downtown to stop and have dinner and enjoy an outdoor environment. I'd like to point out some of the things that I think need to be clarified because they came up as questions from the council members. This is actually the main entrance to the Carlos Club. We were asked, factoring a planning commission hearing, if we would close this door for noise purposes when the music started at about nine-thirty at night. And that has been, that sort of, um, has been an operational, um, thing that they've been doing ever since, I wanna say, December, when it was requested of the planning commission. And that seemed to do a lot to help with some of the noise concerns. The, the way that most patrons come in right now is through this entry because Fred has a very controlled security system. He doesn't want people coming in from both sides, and he has a very, um, high-tech IDing system where he checks IDs with a computer. He also has staff and security at both entrances. The way the new design works is that we've got this low wall with nice big windows in it that mimic the round porthole windows in the front of the building. We actually set the entrance to the patio back eight feet from the alleyway here, or the actual, um, extent of the property line, and created a five-foot sidewalk. So, essentially, we're creating in this alleyway something that's very similar to the sidewalk out in front. The only difference is we don't have a six-inch curb. We're going to designate that with a border detail and differentiated paving here, so that it really does appear and act like a sidewalk. It will help to protect people who are coming and going from the Carlos Club. It will also give a nice sense of entry to this space. We're putting lighted bollards along here, so that it also creates an added vehicular sort of barrier. Um, based on, because of the fire department's, um, concern about doing any kind of permanent chains, we, we opted off of that, but we are doing these lighted bollards. We're gonna have nice lighting along the side of this wall. Now, in response to the planning commission's concern about queuing and people maybe loitering or standing in this alleyway waiting to get in, currently Fred, maybe on a busy night, has ten to fifteen people waiting in line because of the IDing process. What we did, what we designed and, and showed to the planning commission was that we're going to put up a retractable barrier system, and I have some photos towards the end of this slide that I can show you, um, just towards the end of the slideshow here. But, we actually are designating this area right in here, so that probably fifteen to twenty people who would normally be waiting, probably out here if they couldn't get in, would actually wait inside the patio. So, we actually took that concern away by saying, "Yes, we're willing to designate this area." There will be, as you can see, one, two, three, four, five points where there will be security. Now, obviously, depending on the, how many people are there and what kind of activity's happening, um, but Fred has, um, put into place that he will actually have security people here. He'll have somebody watching these doors at all times, he'll have somebody here checking IDs, and then, and then sending people either into the club if that's where they wanna go, or to the dining area. Now, one thing I wanna point out is that, if I go to the next slide, um, I wanna point this out because it's incredibly important. The outdoor dining area consists of two thousand six hundred ninety-six square feet. The interior space where people can, basically this yellow hatched area where people can actually stand and patrons can, um, can move about, is one thousand one hundred and sixty square feet. The restaurant space, the outdoor dining patio, is actually seventy percent of, will be seventy percent of the total occupancy. The inside space will be thirty percent. But, we're willing to, as you can see by this dining, um, arrangement, we worked with the planning commission to say, even though we could be allowed to have a hundred and seventy-eight patrons here based on fire and building code, we're willing to reduce that to a maximum number that's logical for dining seating, which is ninety-six people. We then said, because of entertainers and security and staff, we, we would probably need about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five. The club itself will always maintain eighty-eight occupancy. If there are more than eighty-eight occupants in here, dancing and enjoying this club, no more people will be able to come in. So, technically, the club function is never going to change. That will always remain in place. Fred's feeling is that what's going to happen here is, we're gonna be allowed to have acoustic music until ten PM. There is never going to be DJ music out here, we are not allowed by the noise ordinance to do that. Um, there will never be dancing out here. If acoustic music stops at ten o'clock, chances are people who wanna move into the club scene or to the DJ and dancing will move through these doors, and this is where the activity will occur. This will maintain a low-key environment and atmosphere. Food will still be served until midnight through the kitchen, but it will really be a place where people will sit. The food is gonna be served by servers. It's not a taco truck that people will go up and order burritos and tacos from, it's gonna be a bona fide restaurant. And I think that that's really important to take into consideration. Um, I also just wanna point out again that this dance floor, if this is considered a dance club, this two-hundred-and-ninety-square-foot dance floor, it can fit about twenty-five people on it. I don't know if anyone's been there when dancing's happening, but the DJ usually comes into this corner, there's fixed booths along this side, there's chairs and tables here, and there's stand-up, um, tables here and a fixed booth over here. So, it's a very limited space for actual dancing. I'd also like to point out this time that in discussions with Fred since our last visit here to the city council, we've been talking the idea of, if occupancy levels is of concern, still, Fred is willing to say, could we keep the occupancy of the outdoor dining patio at ninety-six capacity for patrons, keep the eighty-eight capacity inside, but never on any given night or at any given time would we be, would we allow to have maybe more than a hundred and fifty occupants? So, while we wouldn't wanna reduce the ability to say, "Have a private party out here," or, um, "Have this club function with eighty-eight people," we'd be willing to say, "Let's just make it an operational, or put it in the conditional use permit, that we could never have more than a combined hundred and fifty occupants." And that's dramatically lower than what we had originally come before the planning commission with in terms of occupancy. And we think that that will go a long way to, um, to deal with any of these public safety concerns. I wanna point out now that the outdoor dining patio and restaurant function has been designed to create a separate and different experience, and I think it's very obvious. By introducing a new atmosphere, food, live music, acoustic live music, a relaxed environment will attract a new demographic to the Carlos Club and change the current culture of the business, and that has been from day one that I've been working with Fred over the last six months. That has been his intent all along. Good design improves public safety and will attract a broader demographic and serve a greater population of the community. A new aesthetic and outdoor environment with seated dining, table service, will significantly reduce concerns about crowd behavior and public safety. Fred does not anticipate that this property will ever be at capacity between the two spaces. The inside will likely be empty when there are nice evenings and long summer nights outside, and the patio will start music at ten PM when the DJ, music and dancing begins inside. There will not likely be any overlap of the entertainment, and dancing will start when the patio is winding down. Again, the club occupancy of eighty-eight will not be changing, and it will still never grow beyond that. I wanna just talk a little bit about some of the things that Fred has done since we started this process six months ago. There's been significant public outreach efforts made throughout the six-month process and through the planning commission hearings process. Fred went door-to-door along McQ Avenue in Montgomery in these, in this residential neighborhood, in the greater east San Carlos neighborhood, and literally knocked on every single resident's door here. He was concerned, as everybody else was about these concerns about noise and public safety, so he purposely went door-to-door to talk to everybody and show them the plan and ask their comments. He actually, I believe he submitted tonight, um, several signed forms that neighbors in that neighborhood signed, saying that they were in support of the project. We responded to the noise concerns during the public commission hearing process by doing a sixty-five-hundred-dollar noise studying, having somebody come and present that data to the planning commission. It showed that there were no concerns about exceeding the city noise limits either now or in the future when this patio is built. We met with the Chamber of Commerce and had separate meetings for the local business owners, and I was present at those and made presentations. I also understand that the Chamber of Commerce has written a letter in support of this project. I had asked for all documentation to be given to us in advance of this meeting, and I wasn't aware of the fact that there was that letter until, actually, this evening, so I look forward to seeing that. I'd like to, to bring Fred back up to the podium here and speak with me about the public
Regarding the public safety, um, we've never been approached by the police. They've never come to us about these incidents or problems. If there are so many problems, why has the Carlos Club never been cited for noise? Why have they never been cited for alcohol incidents? A matter of fact, ABC wrote us a letter and commended us on our practices. The Alcohol Beverage Control wrote us a letter, we have that letter. Um, what, from two thousand eight to two thousand nine, from two thousand nine to two thousand ten, and from two thousand and ten to two thousand eleven, there were about a hundred and thirty incidents per year. So, we, we went back to this, uh, Sheriff's County records, police rock, uh, the police did not. We went back through the records for the last three years, and we found out there's been a decrease. The incident level's the same, but we're having a decrease in problems. Um, but it's very strange that they, they never contacted us if there was a large problem. Then, all of a sudden, we ask for an application, and there's a million problems. It, it would only make sense to me that they would contact us and talk with us. The first time I did meet with the police, that was just a couple, uh, weeks ago with Captain- Rothus, and he wants the Carlos Club to continue to have incidents. Basically, an incident is when the police are there, and he will continue to aggressively monitor the Carlos Club, and that's what he's said to me. He's said that in public. San Carlos Police Patrol Cars are normally parked in the alley. There's usually two or three in the alley. However, lately, they've even been parking on our premises, so they park in the parking lot. Two weeks ago, they had their headlights pointed in our bar. We actually, people, when they walked out of the bar, they'd walk into police headlights. You know, I don't know if that's necessary. It really hurts our business. Regarding alcohol incidents, why does the police keep issuing liquor licenses? They just keep popping up. We have more and more and more liquor licenses in the last three years. If it's such a problem, why are we still issuing them? When the Carlos Club was granted a parking exemption back in June 2011, there was no mention of public safety issues. It was very easy, smooth. I paid my 1,800 bucks, whatever it was, and they looked at it, and eventually they gave me a permit, conditional use permit. I did have to go back and submit what I'm doing right now, but for the most part, they said, hey, it's a go, and we don't have any problem. We understand you want a restaurant. We understand that. And then all of a sudden, nothing's changed on my end, but the city doesn't want to allow me to do what I've told them from the beginning. I would think at that point, they would have stopped. They would have said, I'm sorry, Fred, we're not going to give you this permit. My goal was to enhance the property value and have a viable business, to make Carlos Club a better place. I'm not a short-term running tenant. This is an investment I'm doing that'll take years and years to recoup. So at this point, I want to turn it over again.
Thanks, Fred. So as Fred said, if significant problems or safety concerns existed around the Carlos Club, I think they surely would have been brought to the table by the public and the community during the three planning commission hearings and over the five-month period that we worked together towards this approval. This is typically the case with any project that I've worked on, in this city and in all other cities I have experienced with. I've never worked on a project that had oppositions from city officials, but very limited to almost no opposition from the community at large. We had a couple of people come to the planning commission hearings, and they were the same couple of people that came and expressed concerns about noise, and they were from the greater east San Carlos neighborhood. Once we addressed the noise issues, the planning commission and we felt that we had satisfied those concerns. We did not get any opposition from anybody that we met at either the Chamber of Commerce, when we did the business outreach, when we walked and talked in the neighborhood to all the neighbors. So it appears that there's a disparity between what the people who live and work around the Carlos Club see and think in comparison to city officials and police opinion about the current and future operations of this establishment. Because the planning commission approval has been appealed based on police and public safety concerns, it's important to look at these numbers again that are provided by the police and the data provided in the staff report. So I'm going to quickly go through this really quick, and I appreciate your patience and attention. In looking at the police report numbers, we know that 131 incidents occurred at the Carlos Club between October 2010 and 2011. We initiated, that is Fred and myself and his staff, the request for additional information as we felt that the number alone appeared hard to justify. The sheriff's office provided us and the planning commission with additional information, which was helpful to better understand the situation. If we look at these incidents statistically, it looks like this. 131 incidents out of a total of 28,000 that apparently the police bureau responds to. That 28,000 was quoted in Chief Rothus's recent letter to the city on April 2nd. If 131 incidents out of 28,000 are what we're dealing with, that's less than half of a percent. If there are seven alcohol-related incidents out of those 131, that's 5%. 73 of those incidents, or 56%, were deputy-initiated drive-bys that were not calls from the Carlos Club, and they were not necessarily related to anything going on in the Carlos Club. If there are seven arrests in a 12-month period, that's approximately one every six weeks at the Carlos Club. Of course, we would like that number to be less, but it does not appear to be indicative of a problem of epidemic proportions that it has been inflated to through this process. I'd like to show you this slide that I think is the same handout that Chief Rothus gave you this evening. We contacted the First Chance Over Living Home and got their report, which was used in the police letter. There were actually 569 arrests in the similar one-year period that the chief was using as a basis for his survey of our property. 10 of those people surveyed, less than 2% of those people, had their last drink at the Carlos Club. We don't know what they were doing before that. We don't know if they were at town. We don't know if they were at the office. All we know is that they said they had their last and final drink at the Carlos Club. Interestingly enough, 289 of those people that were surveyed, of the 569, said they had their last drink at a friend's home, their own home, a relative's home, or at work. That's over 50% of the people who were surveyed. We find that information very interesting. In the staff report, there's a staff comparison of our project to nightclub, to nightclub issues in both Walnut Creek and Mountain View, and they appear to be based on internet-generated information, and I don't feel that they're fair comparisons. The Walnut Creek example was mostly out of Tanner's and Young, younger, much younger demographic, as you could probably see from that photo of all those people loitering around. We also know that it was based on, that experience was based on multiple similar venues attributing to a problem in a one-square-mile radius. Our focus on this project is to attract a local and older demographic. The Carlos Club plays 40s, top 40s, and they have 80s night. I don't think that's the type of music that will attract the kind of people that the police seems to be concerned about. With respect to the Mountain View Club, this was a 600-person, probably a much bigger dance floor than we have, underage club whose owners did not comply with city regulations. We feel it's really unfair and unrealistic to compare our project to these venues. If there was a terrible threat to public safety, we feel that other things, neighbor complaints, people wanting to talk to Fred, the police coming to Fred, the city manager, the staff, the city staff, when they issued the approval for his parking exemption, would have probably come, and we probably could have had something that would have corroborated these findings. Nobody complained to Fred. Nobody asked to sit down with us and discuss it. This is not what happens if you've got a business that is a threat to public safety in the community. If in the community development director and staff's opinion, as noted in their staff report, it is foreseeable that the impact of this small expansion project will have an adverse effect on the community and surrounding area at large, and if staff speculation that this project will be detrimental to the health, safety, and potentially life-threatening to the general public is justifiable, we certainly hope that all future bar, restaurant expansions, and proposed new projects in the downtown area will be held to the same level of scrutiny, review, and judgment by the planning department, the planning commission, and by the city council. I appreciate your time in listening to those details, and I'd like to invite Fred back up to wrap up our presentation for you.
Thank you again. Finally, I just want to say, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to work with the city. We are willing, we've always been willing to negotiate, to come to an agreement. If you look at the occupancy level that we're talking about, 150 people, that's not doubling it, and 150 people is manageable. I mean, I don't know how many people are at town, but it's going to be primarily a restaurant. The occupancy level will be low, and we're making a huge investment to make sure this project stands the times. So we want you to look through the published criticisms. We want you to agree that the design, the operation, and the positive culture will change this project into something better, and it will prove the city of good living. It'll make an impact on the city of San Carlos. It'll be a better place. In closing, if you approve this restaurant addition, you'll be helping Carlos Club be a safer place. If you deny this application, you're asking for the status quo. You're asking for the same thing to happen over and over and over again. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll now go to questions from the council for the applicant. Who would like to start?
Mr. Duncan.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Could you give me a feel for, I think Friday and Saturday nights are your biggest nights, I would assume?
It's the only nights people come.
Okay. Do you have, you have an 88-people limit in the Carlos Club?
Yes.
Do you have a queue? Now, I know it's indicated that there's a line perhaps of some people waiting to go in to get IDs, because you have a security system that, you know, it takes a while. Do you have a constant queue of people because you have more than 88 people in there on Saturday nights?
We did in the very beginning, back in '08, late '08, '09, we were busier. And as I've tried to stress, the reason we're moving towards a restaurant is because this club atmosphere does not work. We're not getting the patrons coming in. We don't have a long line out front. It's very easy to get in. The only type of situation where there's people out front is when they're having a cigarette.
I understand.
We have a few people lining up. Maybe we have five or 10 people at the very, very most.
So you've indicated that the max you're willing to go is 150, so it would be, if it's 88 on one side, then it would be 72 or 62 on the other side, so to speak, in the eating area, or vice versa, however you want to do the math. I mean, or 55 here and 80 over there, or whatever it is.
Right, I mean, there's a couple of ways you can do business. Captain Rothus said that the goal is to make a profit, sure. The goal is to pack my club. If I wanted to pack my club, I could have had a nightclub promoter come in. I could have walked away. He could take care of everything. All I do is run it out, and we would pack the place. They would, these promoters go around cities and they pack clubs. That's what they do. They get the door money. They get a percentage of the sales. I've never done that, because what those people do, they ruin the place. They trash it. And I am, I'm sure this has come through, but I own the property. This is a long-term project. I own my house. I'm not going to go trash my house.
Okay, thank you. Just one clarification, because I was confused. It says your dining occupancy is 96. That's what you guys proposed, correct? 96 to 125?
Yes, so the 96 number came out of, when we were working with the planning commission, they thought the 178 was high, so, because that's based on building and fire code. So what I did is, when I had him did this diagram, and I said, for accessibility and standard dining tables, you could fit 96 people at capacity. So we used that as a basis for coming up with this 100 to 125 numbers, but we thought if you have somebody doing some acoustical entertainment, if you have servers coming back and forth, if you have people queuing up in here, you need to have more higher occupancy than that. But patrons who would be drinking and actually using the space would be 96.
So, but it's, the capacity's 125 for that area, correct?
The building code capacity is 178.
What did your application say?
The app, I'd have to go back and review what the conditional use permit was. I think we asked for, we said 120 to 125, and I don't know that it was clarified.
Okay, so let's say 120, and then the 88, so, because you guys keep throwing around 150, but that's not actually in this application or this conditional use permit.
Right, so yeah, Mayor, what Fred and I had talked about was, if a lower number is desirable, he'd be willing to say, never more than a combined occupancy between the inside and the outside of 150.
But the number we're dealing with in this conditional use permit's over 200. So 125 outside and 88 in the club.
It was, it was through the planning commission process, but we stand here before you saying we're willing to negotiate that down to 150 total.
So the answer's yes, Mr. Ober. So I just want to make sure we're clarified on what's actually in the conditional use permit.
If I may, Mr. Duncan, a quick question, although I'm going to preface my comment by asking Mr. Rubens if this is a question I can ask in this context. What I'm curious about is, why this particular pattern of expansion? Why not simply convert the existing club to the kind of restaurant that you're describing? Am I, is that a question I'm allowed to ask? Okay.
Well, you mean, why don't I convert it to a complete restaurant?
Yes.
Or perhaps even... That's basically what I'm doing. It's going to be a restaurant. What Mayor Klein suggests is, why don't you turn it to a liquor 47, license 47? Well, I've been here with you guys for six-plus months. The Alcohol Beverage Control is understaffed. It'll take me a year to do that, not to mention a liquor license, a 47, is not as valuable as a 48. And the only way, I have to present a new product to San Carlos, and a new product is a place where adults can go and eat. The 48, the definition of a licensed 48 is, A, you don't have to have alcohol, and B, you have to be 21. That's it. You can still have food. That's fine.
All right.
But yeah, I don't want to go through all the government issues and the devaluing of the licenses, and there's no real reason for it.
Actually, because I was actually asking a slightly different question, and actually the question you answered about why not convert to a class 47 license is another perfectly valid question. But my question actually was, we are talking about expanding capacity here. We are talking about, through an expansion, changing the nature of the business. And I guess my question was, why not change the nature of the business by not necessarily doing the expansion, but simply changing the nature of the business? Serving food in the existing, in the existing structure?
I don't have room. There's, the place is maxed out. It's a very small...
Even with putting, even with putting the restaurant capability out in the parking lot, the converted parking lot area? Why not?
Because that's part...
Let Mr. Ober ask his questions.
Sorry. Let somebody else answer it.
Well, if I put a food truck back there, we'd be back at what we have right here, or a food trailer. I think we'd be at the same position we'd be at if I, if I added food out back and didn't have any patrons out back.
Yes.
Well, one...
You'd be serving food inside, basically.
The lounge bar is really not physically set up to be a restaurant. I'd have to do some major work. Versus changing the outside is a lot easier. Now I have an outdoor and an indoor restaurant because we have that area with the fireplace. So I have outdoor, I have indoor. Say someone comes in at 4 o'clock. They're going to meet someone. Well, I'll go to the bar, have a drink. I'll wait for my friend to show up. We'll wait till, maybe there's a wait. When you go to town and want to eat dinner, what do you have to do? You have to wait 15, 20 minutes. You go to the bar, you have a drink, then they finally come and grab you and put you in a seat. So they can go use that, and also, it's just not set up for a restaurant. But that's something I could do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I don't have any questions at the moment.
Mr. Galkop?
The only question I have is, relates to what I had asked staff about earlier, and that is, let's say, for instance, I'll just give you a scenario. You do what you've got planned here, okay? Five years down the road, you say, I'm tired of this. I'm going to sell it. Somebody else buys the property, that CUP goes with the property, right? That's what staff was telling us earlier. So the next owner looks at this and says, I really do want to run a club. I'm not going to listen to what Mr. Duncan, Mr. Duncan's not even, you know, hadn't told me that clubs don't work in San Carlos. I think a club will work. I want a nice, big club, so I'm going to leave the restaurant, the kitchen, because I can serve hors d'oeuvres, but I'm going to turn this seating area, I'm going to get rid of that, or maybe just put, you know, the bar kind of things with the tall, kind of like you have in your bar right now.
I understand. I mean, that's a possibility, but this is, this is a long-term investment. That's why I put...
I understand for you it is, but the CUP goes with the property.
But I don't plan on selling.
But stick with me here. Here's what, here's what I, let me just cut to the chase. I would feel a lot more comfortable about what you have proposed if there were language in the conditional use permit that was stronger that said, this area has to be used for dining. You can't clear it out and turn it into a big dance floor or something like that. So that's, because then if another owner buys it, the other owner can't change the business plan and say, you know, I just want a big club. And I think that's, the fear we're hearing from city staff is, this is going to be a huge club with club-type patrons drinking and spilling out into the plaza area, the parking area, and that's the problem. What you're saying, what I hear you saying is, without saying it, is, look, you know, we talk about, even as a city, that some of our business bleeds off to other cities because we don't have XYZ storefront. You know, we don't have a hardware store, so we bleed off. You know, people leave San Carlos to go to the hardware store. I'm just giving you an example, okay? What I see your business doing is kind of saying, you know, I'm getting used here. The town and Pia Cherry's and all those places, they get to feed people, and then their clientele comes to me... comes to me afterwards, and all they get from me is a bar.
They're full, with no money in their pocket.
They're full. And what you're saying is, business owners, I want some of that action, I want to be able to feed these people, and if they want to stay afterwards and go to my club, that's great, but as a businessman, now I've made some money off of these people who want to dine. And the only thing that I'm doing that's different than those other places, and this is what I hear you saying, is, my place is adult-exclusive. You can't walk in with your kid. You can go to Pia Cherry's, or Town, or any of those restaurants with your kid and have, I wouldn't want to, but, well, at least not with some of them. But, it's available, right? And you're saying, no, this is going to be a different kind of environment, if you go to dinner, you know it's going to be adult-only. That's what I hear you saying. What I'm saying is, that sounds like a fine idea, I want to know, under the conditional use permit, that it's in writing, that has to be seating, it has to be a restaurant appendage to your club. Are you open to that condition?
I think I can address, address your question, and this came up definitely during the Planning Commission review process. The hours of operation and the type of music that can be played in both spaces is totally different. So we can have acoustic music till ten PM at night, that is it, out here on the patio. On the inside, we can have DJ music and dancing, and that typically doesn't start till ten o'clock. But we are not allowed to have DJ music and dancing outside. And that really is what distinguishes, in my opinion, as an architect and understanding occupancies and zoning regulations, my understanding is that's what makes it a nightclub, is that there is dancing and there's music that can go until two o'clock in the morning and while drinks are being served. So, based on the conditions of approval and the Planning Commission approval, that really could never happen on this property with this conditional use permit, because you can't have that type of music outside, and you can only have music till ten o'clock. Because that was something that was studied during the noise study and review and analysis, and that came up a lot. And so, it sort of is set up in a way that the club could never really expand outside. People could be outside and talking, but there's not going to be any loud music after ten o'clock because the acoustic music has to shut down. And if the noise ordinance gets violated, then there's a serious issue, and Fred just won't do that because his business, his business would shut down. And I think that that would be able to be held in place for any other property owner.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Goukha?
Yeah, it did, to some extent, yeah. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, I just have one question. My mother always used to say to me, nothing good happens after midnight. And, did a little, it was an admonishment to me to come home early. Most of the nearby restaurants on San Carlos Avenue and Laurel Street close between ten-thirty and eleven. I know the Orchid Room stays open until two. You know, a lot of the problems, and I think that, if, as Chief Roethlis pointed out, a lot of the problems happen one o'clock, two o'clock, two-thirty in the morning. How would you feel about possibly closing your business at midnight?
With the entire business?
Yeah.
Well, then I'd be just like the other guys. One, I mean, I have the ability to be open till two, we are closing at midnight, the outside, so you can't get food, can't get alcohol, so effectively the outside is closed. The only thing it's used for is for lounging, hanging out, they can still have a drink out there, they could use the restrooms, we have to put restrooms in, they have to exit, enter, that type of thing. Typically, our business, I mean, from one o'clock to two o'clock, we basically shut down. One-thirty, our bar's almost completely empty. Our sales are basically nonexistent from one o'clock to two o'clock. People are leaving earlier. So we don't have a lot of business at that time. But I wouldn't, I couldn't shut down early.
Thank you.
Okay, a quick question, a couple of questions. One, you said that the patio shuts down at midnight, but you can still be outside and you can still bring drinks from the bar outside, correct?
Correct.
I think what Fred was saying, with the food service-
It shuts down.
Well, the food, and we don't have a bar outside either. The bar is by a server only and it's within the food trailer, where they cook the food, the modular food unit. So, you can't go order a drink as a patron, you have to go through a server.
But if I go in-
At all the clock, it'll be closed.
But if I walk into the bar and buy a Corona, I can go outside and talk to my friends.
That's correct.
So the food trucks close, or the food serving areas close, but that's it? Everyone else, all one-hundred-and-twenty-five people can stay?
No, because only eighty-eight people would be allowed inside-
One-hundred-and-twenty-five people in the patio can stay?
Sure.
Correct? So the only thing that's actually closing is the kitchen?
But then there'd be no one in the club.
There'd be eighty-eight people in the club.
Everyone moves to the club.
I'm asking, yeah, but we're talking about full occupancy. So you could have one-hundred-and-twenty-five people in the patio till one-thirty or whenever last call is-
They're not going to be out there.
I'm not asking if they're going to be there, I'm saying you can have one-hundred-and-twenty-five people.
But they're not going to be out there.
That's great.
I don't know why you're asking.
Because we have to base on what the actual plan says. And the plan says you can have one-hundred-and-twenty-five people.
They can be out there, they will be using the bathroom, they'll probably be walking with their drinks from inside to get some air outside and have a conversation, because it's really hard to have a conversation when there's DJ music going on. So it's really probably going to be couples having conversations and finishing up their drink, or something like that.
Okay, so you can't have up to the maximum capacity all the way until the entire thing closes, which is one-thirty to two o'clock?
Yeah, and the reason for that is that this patio also serves as the main egress for the facility. You can't really, I mean, chances are, he could say, have a security person there saying people can't stand on the patio, but they're still going to use that space to exit the building at the, at the end of the evening when the, when the bar closes.
Okay, a couple of other questions. Would you be willing to close the patio entirely at midnight?
I mean, not really, because people want, people want to go out and enjoy a beer, and relax, and get fresh air. It gets hot inside, I have to keep my front door closed, so people want to go out, relax, have a drink, talk to a girl, it's, it's very difficult to talk inside that, inside the bar with music going on.
Okay. And then, my question is, with the, with the kitchen, it was referred to as permanent, is, is the kitchen going to be on a foundation?
Yes, it will be.
But I see wheels in the pictures.
I apologize, that's my conceptual rendering. We haven't gotten to the point where we've actually completely rounded out the design of that, but it's going to be permanent, and it's going to be plumbed and have permanent electricity and sewer and a foundation.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Goukha.
Just, you prompted it. Right now, can anyone get a drink and go outside?
No.
Okay, so they have to stay inside?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seems like that's all the questions we have, we're going to go to public comment.
Just under the chair, will there be a point where we can ask further questions of staff?
Yes. And we'll do that after public comment, before we get to our discussions. So we have about ten speakers, we're going to start with Mike Chilton, and then Mike Amin, if you could state your name and the city you're from, and then you'll get two minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting till eleven o'clock, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chilton, you have your two minutes.
Hello, my name's Mike Chilton, I'm also one of the co-owners of the Carlos Club. I reside in Portola Valley. Most of everything I wanted to say has already been discussed, but the one thing you have to take in consideration is, San Carlos is now a destination, you know, you, you want it to be a successful downtown, and it is now. So, whether the Carlos Club gets this permit or not, people are still going to drink in San Carlos. I mean, it'd be naive to think that only the Carlos Club is going to attract somebody who drinks. If they don't go to the Carlos Club, they're going to go to the Orchid Room, they're going to go to Town, or the office. So, you know, my point is on that, by rendering a permit, you're not going to bring more people into San Carlos, it's already a destination. So, I hope you guys will consider that, and thank you.
Thank you. Mike Amin, and then Roberta Gonzalez, I believe that's Greco.
Thank you, council members and mayor, for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Mike Amin, and I live in Belmont, California. I'm a patron and a huge fan of your city, and your downtown especially, which incorporates a large diversity in retail, food, and entertainment venue. You all should be very proud of that, of this accomplishment. I'm considered an industry expert in the hospitality field. I own hotels, restaurants, bars, clubs, and other, other real estate assets. One of the clubs I open is called Infusion Lounge in San Francisco, it's probably the premier destination club in all of San Francisco. And it's, and I also, I'm a past chairman of a hotel association, and a current board member of the US Health Hospitality School, of, School of Hospitality. Fred Duncan has been a friend of mine for many years. Fred has approached me and asked me to, what he should do, how should I, you know, turn this thing around, and, and so we collectively have, you know, looked at this with the architect, and, and created a brand awareness where people could have something special in San Carlos that's different from someone else and other, other restaurants, and create a, a opportunity where it's classy, nice, and it kind of fits the bill that where the city is going as well. And I think that has been accomplished with a lot of hard work, input from all of you guys, Planning Commission, Planning Department, even the chief. So I am a little bit surprised by the, all of the misinformation that has been taking place over this process, and I, that's got to just stop. This is a quality production. Mr. Duncan's name has unfortunately been tarnished over the last few months, and I hope after this process is over, we all could get along and move this wonderful establishment forward. Finally, I think this is an oasis in the making, in an alley which you currently have a bunch of trash and decaying, and a decaying industrial look. I fully support the project, and I hope you as well would do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta Gonzalez-Greco, and Glenn Galino.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council of San Carlos. My name is Roberta Gonzalez-Greg, a four-year homeowner, local tax-paying resident of San Carlos. I am also a seven-year employee at a local San Carlos business. This means, I not only earn my money in San Carlos, I spend my money in San Carlos, at numerous businesses, restaurants, dry cleaners, farmers' markets, and upon occasion, the Carlos Club. I attended the last public council meeting in regards to the licensing of outdoor dining at the Carlos Club, listened intently, and was amazed as it was announced that a hundred-and-thirty-one police incident reports had been made in regards to the Carlos Club. I found these remarkable. I researched these incidents to find these numbers were misleading, and in reality, these incidents were self-generated, not by neighbors or the community, but by the San Carlos Police Department itself. Self-generated means that these could be on-spot checks by the Police Department, not necessarily things from directly inside within the Carlos Club. I think that these, and I've also found that most of these incidences were by and large subject, not subject to local law infractions. With this in mind, I believe that the Carlos Club has been unfairly judged and the aforementioned misleading incidents reports, I believe that the San Carlos community will only benefit from having a varied option for patrons to enjoy outdoor entertainment and dining with local cuisine. I respectfully ask that the mayor and the council reconsider and allow the Carlos Club to enjoy this, and allow them to have this, this dining, outdoor dining area, and have a venue enjoying all the other San Carlos venues which have the same and like-type businesses. Thank you.
Glenn Galino, and then Andrew Binstock.
Thank you, members of the council. A lot of what I've heard here tonight, I heard back in the eighties when I was opening up Giggle's Comedy Club right here in San Carlos. A lot of the same concerns were expressed that I've heard here tonight. I do know that with all those concerns, I was still able to get a conditional use permit, and to my recollection, with the exception of one time when the club was closed, somebody drove a stolen vehicle through our front door. Other than that, the only time the Police Department were at the club, and I think Greg Roethlis can attest to this, was when we were doing day benefits for the city, which we did several of. We pretty much had an uneventful situation at the club. There was very little of what was anticipated by the council at the time and the Planning Commission at the time in terms of problems. And I think, I think, I've known Greg for years, I think Greg can get up here and tell you right now that we ran a clean operation, and it's possible to have an entertainment venue in this city that's not going to create all the problems. Thank you.
Andrew Binstock, and then Russ Porteta.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Andrew Binstock. I'm concerned about what, what happens outside of the redesigned club when patrons are going home. What you, what effectively this permit requests is getting rid of a lot of current parking spaces for members, so, for, excuse me, for clients of the club. So those clients are going to be more widely distributed throughout the San Carlos downtown, walking back and forth, driving through, driving through the city, getting back and forth. And I'm very concerned about the safety implications of having, of having people who are intoxicated walking through the downtown and, and driving through it to get, get to their cars. I think that the pressure on parking is already something, an issue that you, you are obviously clearly familiar with. We have the Applewood Restaurant opening up just, just down the street in a few months, which will add additional pressure on the parking, meaning that the patrons of the club will have to go even farther to recover their cars and drive further through the city. I think that represents a very significant safety issue, so I would recommend voting against the permit.
Thank you. Russ Porteta, then followed by Pam Daniels.
Russ Porteta, sixteen-twenty Light Oak Way, been re-employed by the Carlos Club as an assistant to Fred with this particular project. Hopefully, I can get this done in two minutes, especially, I feel like I'm a member of the Oakland A's going up against the New York Yankees and the heavy hitters that the city brought forth tonight. So, the Carlos Club, you know, we talked about the, the city of San Carlos promoting business. Here's some reality for the Carlos Club. Since the year two thousand and nine, our business has declined thirty percent. Fred wouldn't be a businessman, a successful businessman, and some of you wouldn't be a successful businessman if your business was declining at that rate year after year. We have constantly tried to find new and different types of venues to bring in revenue. We tried comedy nights, trivia nights, Mexican bond nights, cougar nights, in an attempt to increase business, but nothing made a long-term impact. Business owners like Fred and yourselves have benchmarked figures of sustainable profit. In the first twenty months, we reached that figure eighteen times. In the last twenty-one months, we reached that figure four times. This is why the Carlos Club needs to make this restaurant work. We cannot survive on two nights a week. Fred and I met with the mayor on March twentieth. Fred indicated that he was willing to make some compromises regarding hours and occupancy. The mayor indicated that he was pleased with our willingness to compromise, but a subsequent meeting with the captain led to nothing. It takes two to compromise, and so far, the city has shown no willingness to go there. On March twenty-eighth, an email from the mayor criticized our handling of an incident when the fire department responded to a person in the alley with an injured eye. That event did occur, however, that person was not a Carlos Club patron that night or a customer. He had been kicked out of the Orchid Room just a short time before. These are some of the misconceptions that exist regarding the Carlos Club. During the summer, I contacted Al Savay, or tried to contact Al Savay three times.
You're going to have to start wrapping up, Mr. Porteta.
Three times. None of them I received a response from. I contacted Sergeant Albertson from the Police Department to try to figure out what we can do to work together. Again, three, three calls, no responses. What's this all about? The pictures on the wall had been going on for a year and a half, the police saw those things going on for a year and a half, there were no complaints about them. And lastly, when, all this has gone on, with the city spending all this time with their staff, we have one full-time person, three part-time, four part-time people, people, and a cleaning person, to try to put together a report comparable to what the city did and the money they spent, and every time I get a call asking for increased taxes, I'm going to think seriously about what I vote on those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Porteta. Pam Daniels, followed up by Cleary Klinger.
Hi, my name is Pam Daniels, and I thank you guys for your patience this evening and staying through all the public commentary and allowing us to- staying through all the public commentary and allowing us to share on this matter. I'm a San Carlos resident, but I'm actually here to speak on behalf of, from a business perspective. I have recently leased an office space, actually, that is immediately to the west of this property, 1139 San Carlos Avenue. Now, I bet I didn't have the chance to meet with these folks because this only happened within the last month, and I guess I didn't get that notification of what was actually going to be changing outside of our windows at this office space. But what I wanted to let you know is that our office suite is on the backside of this building on the second floor, and so will be directly impacted by any noise, and I know there's been some nice work done on the noise inside the facility. But my specific concern is that starting at four o'clock, there will be patrons going in and out of the facility, restaurant, bar, club, whatever it is, that will be creating noise, and my business hours are essentially usually from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So if we start having a lot more noise outside, that directly impacts my business activities. So that's one thing to keep in mind. The other, so what I would like to ask is that there be some constraint on the use of the patio between four, at least between four, and not starting up work until, starting up that patio activity until 6:00 PM. So that's my first request. The second, second concern is about personal safety. Because of the location of my office, I use this alley. This is my primary entrance into the building. And so, you know, I don't, not worry about the statistics, I'm not worried about who's right or who's wrong, but the reality is, is when you have a lot more people, from any kind of activity where there is a lot of drinking going on, there is more risk of conflict confrontation and personal safety issues. So again, I would, this is not what I anticipated when I leased this office, so I was hoping not to have heightened anxiety by being a part of the business activity in downtown San Carlos. And so I would like to ask the City Council to consider not approving this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last, we have Clary Klinger and then Lynn Hedges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Clary Klinger. I am a homeowner in San Carlos who has lived close to the Carlos Club since 2005. I am a non-drinker and a night person. I am very surprised to hear people are complaining about the noise. I personally have never heard anything. Being a night person, I would love to have someone to eat late at night that is more upscale than In-N-Out or the office with no children around. Having a late-night upscale destination for food paired with alcohol will greatly benefit the City of San Carlos and the Carlos Club as a whole. To quickly address the Police Chief Rothaus's concerns, if the Carlos Club is currently such a public safety hazard, then adding food will overall decrease the intoxication of patrons, which in turn will make the Carlos Club safer than the Police Chief has currently implied it is. I am disappointed he is not more supportive of decreasing the intoxication of its patrons. I feel strongly the crowd will become more sophisticated, less intoxicated, and I'm in favor of the expansion. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you. And it looks like Ms. Hedges is gone, so, is there any other public comment? Feel free to come on up. You can fill out a speaker card when you're done.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Alard, out of Beaumont. Not a good speechwriter, but a couple words here. Really disappointed to hear some of the comments represented here on behalf of the City Planner and City Attorney. We all know that you guys have a lot of power to put together the project the way you want it to be. Whether you want 100 people out there on the whole club, whether you want a smoking area, you have the power to make that happen. I guarantee you, Freddie will compromise anything to make that happen. He's not stupid to spend $300,000 and not complying to what you want to do. If he gives me his business today for free, I wouldn't give it, I won't take it, because he's not making any money, he's losing money every month. So a smart businessman is not going to spend $300,000 unless he's really, really serious and believes that this project will change everything. And that's what he's trying to do. He's trying to put together a restaurant that will complement the rest of the restaurants in San Carlos, okay? You can do, you can put together whatever conditions you want to put together. But I want to talk about quickly, because my minute is expiring, about the incident that the chief talked about. The reason they decreased over the last year or so, it's the nature of the beast. You open a brand-new business, everybody goes there. It's overwhelming. You all know when town opened, you couldn't get in for an hour and a half, two hours, when you walked in. You couldn't get a table. It's the nature of the beast. Now you go to town, within 15, 20 minutes, you have a table. So the incident that happened at the Carlos Club, it happened early when the Carlos Club opened, because people from everywhere, San Mateo, Berlangue, Palo Alto, Foster City, they came to check out this new place in San Carlos. So obviously, if you look at the statistics over the last 12 months or so, or a year and a half, everything have decreased, because people got tired of it, people don't want to go there. He's tired of it. He doesn't want a club anymore. He wants to open a restaurant. He wants to have a patio because it's unique. Why doesn't he convert the inside to a dining room and put the kitchen outside? Because he is representing something unique. The San Carlos doesn't have.
We need you to start wrapping up, sir.
So, as far as the restaurants, kitchen closes at 10 o'clock, as most restaurants in the whole peninsula, they close at 10 o'clock. However, their bars open till midnight. A lot of cities don't even allow their restaurants to open till midnight. Once they shut down, everything is shut down. So his idea is unique. So as far as the capacity, you have to control that, and he's willing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will do follow-up questions, if anyone has some. I know, Ms. Robert, you did.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this question is for Mr. Savay, but if he wishes to defer it to somebody else, that would be fine with me. Mr. Savay, one of the issues that's come up here, or one of the thoughts that's come up here, listening now to Mr. Duncan's presentation, there really are, there's a, there's a third, there's a third type of enterprise. It's not restaurant versus bar slash nightclub. It's restaurant versus bar slash nightclub versus, for lack of a better term, I'll call it, an adult-only restaurant. That, I'll just leave it at that. I think you know what I mean. I'd be interested in whatever relevant experience you may have or your staff may have to help me understand, is that a different dynamic? In other words, previously, we sort of talked about, in fact, I think staff even made the comment that, that gee, if this was a traditional restaurant, that would even be a permitted use. But what's being, what's being proposed or being asked for is something different than that. And now with this sort of third element out here, I'm trying to see how that fits in. So does that clarify enough to, you understand what I'm asking about?
Somewhat.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I mean, it's rather difficult, because I mean, in our own community, I can't think of any examples of this. And I think, as some of the speakers said, it's a unique concept. And so we don't have, I certainly personally don't have much experience working with non-traditional restaurants per se. I guess a couple of issues are, you know, how do you police it if you were going to do that? Who does that? Who goes in and makes sure that it's operating the way it's supposed to, or the way it was supposed to operate? So those are the issues. I guess under the, I was under the impression that the ABC 48 license was a little different, that, that to be a real restaurant, you had to have a bona fide restaurant. That's what it says in the, I believe. And there are certain definitions and classifications that ABC puts on a restaurant that's different than a nightclub. Perhaps, and I'm not sure yet. The 48 license allows you to scale up or scale down. That's what I'm hearing, but I'm not sure. So, and I've talked to other cities, in other cities, they say that if you're a restaurant, then prove it. They say that, that you need to generate 70% of your food sales and, through food, and you have to have your accountant on a, either on a, when the city asks for it, or on an annual or semi-annual basis, you have to prove that you're a restaurant by the percentage of gross receipts. So there's, there's a number of issues here, and I'm not even sure if I answered your question, but that's all I really have for you.
Well, Ms. Robert, just a jump in, there is an example of what you're talking about. It's in Palo Alto, it's called Rudy's. During the day, it's a sports bar, and then at night, they clear out all the tables and it turns into a dance club. So they do, there are examples of that in the area.
Oh, I see. And I presume as a sports, as, when it's in its sports bar inclination, it probably is not a, you have to be 21 old or you get a.
I've never seen kids in there, but I don't know for sure. But I've never seen kids in there. But at night, it has out service, and it's a dance club, and it has a bar and all that.
It sounds like it's also a fairly rare beast.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Crissily, do you have any follow-up questions? Mr. Collins?
Yeah.
Mr. Grecop?
Additional questions?
Yeah. Okay, I have no additional questions either. So we will go to discussion. I think it's easiest to start with like an overall discussion of how you feel about the project and where you're kind of leaning before we get down into the nitty-gritty. So, Mr. Robert?
Well, actually, I just, I was, the item that I interrupted Mr. Malpe about early on, I just want to say for the record that I have met with Mr. Duncan after he invited me to come down and meet with him, and I very much appreciated his taking the time to do that. I learned a lot there. I also want to be clear for the record that one of my son's best friends is Mr. Porteta's son. I know Mr. Porteta, although I think our sons know each other better than we probably know each other. But in my opinion, none of those contacts or those experiences or relationships will make it impossible for me to render a fair and impartial judgment here. Did I say that right, Mr. Rubens? Thank you.
Would you like to start with a discussion?
No, I thought I'd let somebody else do that.
Okay. Who wants to jump in first?
I'll go first, because nobody wants to talk. This is, I've been on the council six and a half years. You know, you've dealt with artificial turf, we've dealt with police and fire reorganizations, all, you know, some more important than others. I don't, I'm not going to try to quantify this as an important or non-important decision. It's important certainly to the people that are involved in it, and it's important to our city. But it's a real quandary for this council member. I always feel that if people want to invest their hard-earned money into something and want to get a benefit of a, of a business, that they, for the most part, should be allowed to do that. This isn't a unique situation in that there are alcoholic establishments in this, in this city, and have been and will be for a long time. There are incidents at other places. The Carlos Club, in one sense, is a, because it's been around so long, I think it's somewhat of a victim of its, of its longevity in some sense, of the attitude of, let's say, the general populace, if we went out in the street and asked 50 people about the Carlos Club, they wouldn't know that Mr. Duncan came in three years ago and made it look like it looks now. So all those things said, it's awfully hard to go against staff when staff is aligned in a certain way. It's also very difficult when public safety officials like Chief Rothis come up before us relative to what we do in our city. I am still beating this in, as I told our city manager today when we spoke for about an hour on this, and I don't show any bruises here of where he hit me, I mean, no, he didn't hit me. It's, it's a very big quandary for me, and I'm still fighting it, and I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say about this issue.
Mr. Collins?
Okay. I want to thank everybody for speaking, and Mr. Duncan and Ms. Cincella, I want to thank you for your presentations. They're very well done. This is kind of difficult for me too, growing up in this town. You know, there's a lot of, there's very few institutions that were here when I was a child. Now, maybe this is under a different owner, but it's, still has the same look as it did when I was young. And on its face, I think the aesthetics of the project are, are good. I also, like Mr. Robert, visited with Mr. Duncan at his establishment, and I was given a nice tour. I've seen all the plans, I think the concept is very inviting, and I applaud the architect for her work on it. And I think Mr. Duncan is to be commended for all the work he's done over the last few years to upgrade and beautify the building. And in many cities, this would be a welcome expansion of a popular establishment. I was going to say popular nightclub, but after the presentation, I decided that maybe we need to rethink that. But there's just other issues that, that are, are concerning me, and obviously, the biggest one is public safety. And I saw when we were doing some of the, there was a, some of the slides were going around, that the one that I had sent over was there. Is that something that we can, that we can show at this point? What I did here is I just, I took the, the statistics from the ABC stats, and I decided I needed to get a better handle on all of the alcohol-related arrests and how they break out in terms of benchmark cities. And so the first column there is just liquor licenses. There's 318 liquor licenses in these, in these five peer cities. Our percentage of those liquor licenses is 23%. So we rank about third in the number of liquor licenses for these five, for these five peer cities. So one would expect that if there are 355 alcohol-related incidents in 2010, that we'd have about 81 of them, that would be 23%. The actual was, was 132, which is, brings us to 37% of the total, and that puts us in the number one position. The other one was, I decided, well, and I'm kind of a data-driven person, so forgive me if this is just getting a little too, you know, much into detail, but I thought, well, what's the average alcohol-related incidents per license? And it's about 1.12, a little over 1. Ours is 1.81, that's 62%. Not as bad as Beaumont, they're 72%, but we're still in the second position. Now, none of this is to suggest that all of this is the fault of the Carlos Club, or even that they have the majority of it. That's open to debate, and that whole 131 number is all, is obviously been thrown around, and everybody's argued about that. And I'm not going to argue the merits of that, that's been well argued on both sides. But what this tells me is that we pay a lot of attention, we pay a lot of police attention to alcohol-related incidents in our town. That's really all I have to go on. It's, and Chief Rothis has told us that the staffing really isn't any different in any of these cities. It tells me that this is already impacted, that San Carlos is already impacted by this. So you add to that this, this difficult to quantify anecdotal details of incidents around the club that have not resulted in police action or reporting. And as I said earlier, you have a lot of establishments that close at between 10:30 and 11:00. So it's, you know, it leaves the, it leaves one open to the suggestion that when these things are happening at midnight, and one, and at two, that they, they are more likely to be as a result of, of the Carlos Club. There's also the issue of the self-initiation, it's been, it's been suggested that it's police harassment. I, I have to disagree. I think there's very little history of that in San Carlos. There may have been one or two incidents, but I really don't think that that's our history. The other thing that enters my mind is that Chief Rothis has a long history of professional service as an officer, as a police chief. His reputation is solid. I'm not aware of any project in this town that he's ever opposed, or any other town that, that, that he's opposed, as, as he pointed out. So, you know, but leaving those things aside from it, I've just got a couple other concerns. We've got, there's already limited parking, I don't think anybody will argue that there's limited parking back there. So what puzzled me was that we're going to eliminate 11 parking spaces and then add the possibility that we're going to have 100 more people there on any given night. The ingress and egress of the alley concerns me. It's a small alley, it's one-way. You've got people being dropped off, people being picked up. You've got taxis, you've got police cars, you've got people standing in line. All of those things are in a very dark alley, and I won't even get into the issues of, you know, the, the dark corners and that sort of thing. So that just leaves me with a, just some final thoughts. We've been accused in this city of being too pro- We've been accused in this city of being too pro-business, we've been accused of being too anti-business. When I was on, when I was a member of the Chamber of Commerce, they thought, you're just in bed with the city, so all you want is more business, and you want more revenue, more taxes, that sort of thing. Then when I was campaigning for office, people said, well, you know, the city's just anti-business. So I, you know, I, I wanted to get those two people in the same room and have them argue it out. But what argues in favor of us being pro-business is that we have a Best Buy, we have Home Depot, we have three Starbucks, a Peet's, what else?
Plantation.
TJ Maxx. Plantation. We have a Panth coming here, you know, that's a huge project. So I, I think it's difficult to say that we're anti-business. You know, but we've also said no to pot clubs, and massage parlors, and dollar stores on Laurel Street, those are things that, you know, if people really wanted to say we were anti-business, well, maybe they could, but I just think it's, to me, it comes down to a question of, of, I'm trying to decide, you know, what I am, and I've just decided, I'm just pro-San Carlos, and there are some business models that fit and some don't. I, I really want this project to be successful, I'm just not sure that I can vote for it at this point in the manner that it's constituted. If there were enough changes made to it, if it came back as a restaurant, things like that, I think I could probably support it. But I think in, in this form, at this point in time, it's difficult for me to support it.
Mr. Gocca, Mr. Olbert?
Um, I will reiterate the comments that, that the rest of you have made, because there's quite a few of them that I, that I would agree with. The biggest issue that, that concerns me is, actually, I believe based on my conversations with Mr. Duncan and his, his staff, and with the experts that he's hired to, to help us to put this together, and by the way, thank you also for all the, all the work you did in your presentation. I actually believe that, that they are absolutely committed to having the project work exactly the way they're describing, and, and that, that's what they want, that's what they believe will happen, and they believe that, that they have the tools in place and the resources in place to be able to do that. The issue I wrestle with, and I applaud that, I think that's great, the issue I wrestle with is what if, what if they're wrong? And I don't say that as any kind of criticism, I say that as somebody who spent quite a few years in business, and made quite a few decisions, and some of them are right, and some of them are wrong, and some of them worked out the way I expected them to, and some of them didn't. And I ask myself, where do we end up with, what types of things do we end up with if it doesn't work out the way everybody wants it to? And that's where I started having concerns. I, I could easily see, with nobody desiring this as an outcome, that we end up with effectively a much more robust, aggressive, whatever an economy, what the right word is, purely nightclub operation, effectively. And that does give me pause, because I, to borrow a phrase that, that Mr. Collins used, I, I don't really think that that's a model that works too well for San Carlos, that fits too well with San Carlos, maybe, maybe fits is a better word than works. And that's what gives me pause. It's not the intent of the folks, it's not their, it's not their beliefs, it's not their willingness to hard, work hard and try and make this a reality, it's what happens if it doesn't work out. And I worry that the community could be left with something that they really would not desire, and in fact, which I don't believe Mr. Duncan or any of his supporters would desire either, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't happen. And that's the primary thing that troubles me.
Mr. Gocca?
Well, first off, since everyone's done their bit on disclosure, I did, before this ever was called up to the city council, I did go and meet with Mr. Duncan on a Saturday afternoon with my nine-year-old son, just before opening hours, though, I believe, and talked to him at length about the project he had planned. And then today, I met with the city manager, the city attorney, and the chief of police for probably about an hour. So those are all the contacts I've had outside of this venue here regarding this project. I think Mr. Olbert brings up a good question about what, what if, what happens? I ask myself, what happens if we turn these guys down tonight? Mr. Collins talked about the Carlos Club being a longtime establishment in San Carlos, it's also a historical building, its architecture befits only a club or, or bar-type venue, it just screams that when you look at it from the outside, that's what it's saying, that's what it's, that's what the architecture is trying to say to you. I'm a bar, come in, have a drink, enjoy yourself for a little bit, and then see you later. It doesn't, it doesn't say anything else. It's, it's not like, you know, the Drake Building's been there for a long, long time, and the Drake Building at one time was a Mexican restaurant, now it's AT&amp;T. You can do that to the Drake Building, you can't do that to the San, to the Carlos Club. I've heard a lot about risk, I understand, I understand what city staff is trying to say, I respect the chief a lot, and I understand what he's trying to say, but, boy, I keep, you know, when I met with the city staff for an hour, I was like, I see your point, I'm going to deny this project because it's a huge public safety issue. Then I hear again, Mr. Duncan come in with his architect and talk about really what is, what kind of business he wants to have, I see a guy trying to, you know, make a go of it, I see a guy who says, look, clubs don't work in San Carlos, and I'm not going to have a club because it doesn't work. But what I do want to do is have a restaurant, I think you used the best term, Mr. Olbert, when you said adult-only restaurant, and there's not any of them, even what Mr. Klein brought up in Palo Alto is not the business model that this guy has. But I hear the, the concerns about risk, you know, that this might happen, that might happen. We hire an employee, when Bob and I served on the fire, on the fire commission together, we had an employee who went out on disability and turned around and sued the fire department and cost us, what, Bob, $400,000?
I don't know.
Something like that, some outrageous figure. We were dealing with all kinds of problems at that time, when we were transitioning from South County Fire to the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. That's a risk, you hire, what I'm saying is, you hire an employee for the city, or the police department, or the fire department, you may end up with a $400,000 case on your hands. You don't know. We don't know with this. It could be a great business, maybe not. So I understand the risk. I guess right now, without having heard anything else, I lean towards, you know, I've watched this man sit here, this whole meeting with a furrowed brow, wondering what his fate is going to be. And, you know, and I, I'm a business owner myself, I own my own business, I run my own business, I understand the risk that this guy's trying to take. Yes, we can talk about the risk of your police officers, I understand that, I understand the, the risk that city staff feels like is there, the public safety issues, but I guess as a business owner, I have a leaning already towards other business owners.
Can I, for just a second, I just want to move to-
We're going past 11?
Extend the meeting to 11? For a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Actually, you want to, you want to send the meeting to like, you want to do it to like 11:30?
I'm sorry, 11:30. Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Keep going, Mr. Gocca.
That's right. So, myself, I would see some tweaks that we could make to the conditional use permit, some of the things that I had asked about that require the seating, I understand what the architect's saying, that's acoustic music, so forth, but I do think having something else in there that says, it's got to be seating, you can't clear this out and turn it into a big dance floor, you know, would help. I was hoping that there would be some negotiation on closing hours, maybe we could still probe that a little bit, maybe not 2, but 1 o'clock or something, because I, I also had the same comment that you did, that, you know, most of the chief's complaints, or the, the issues that they've had, happen at, and I think every one of them, he said, you know, Saturday morning, or Sunday morning, and, and your mother was right. There's no reason to be out on the street past midnight unless you're looking for trouble. But I think if we, if we could ask Mr. Duncan to adjust the, the closing hours, maybe even till, move it from, I think he's open until 2 now, make it 1 o'clock, and, and that might mitigate some of the issues. He's already agreed also to change the overall capacity, and I think we should take him up on it.
Okay, so that goes to my comments. You know, I, this is a little tougher for me, because I actually go to establishments like this, so I'm not so far past the time that, you know, I went to the Carlos Club for years, when it was the old Carlos Club, and now there's the new Carlos Club, so, you know, I've seen what the chief is talking about, I've, I've actually known the chief for almost two decades at this point, and I respect what he says, and the fact that over, after seven years of being the chief of police in this town, he's never once said, you guys don't do this, this is a bad idea for the town, when he comes to us and says that, I think we have to take that very, very, very seriously. You know, Chief Rothis has been an amazing chief, you look at all the changes we've had in our police department, and all the things that have happened in our town, he's never taken a hard stance with us and said, you guys shouldn't do this. He's always been a team player, he's always found a way to compromise, and on this one, he's saying, there is no upside for our community, there is no upside for public safety. And that, that weighs heavily on me. There's been a lot of comments saying, well, if the Carlos Club doesn't change, it's just going to continue on as it is. And I asked the chief about that, I asked, well, you know, I mean, that's a valid argument. If we do nothing, the same type of behavior is going to continue. And the chief's response was, well, it's containable now, it's the price of doing business, the bar exists, it's not going to go anywhere, we're not going to put anyone out of business, that's not his aim, to put anyone out of business, but it's containable now. If we let it triple in size and the behavior continues, our police force can't handle it. We have three-in-one staffing now, if there's a fight, just two guys fighting in the alley, that takes a minimum of two cops. That means 50% of our police force is gone. For however long that takes, to calm that fight down, arrest them, transport them, and do all of that, we've lost half of our police force. And that's a scary subject, we have, as the chief said, 28,000 residents, 11,000 homes, and I don't even know how many miles of road he said, 82 miles of road, and I only have two police officers doing that at, at one time, and that's just if it's a small incident. If it's a larger incident, we lose our entire police force. And I just don't know. You know, I, I really don't know if this is the right move for our city. It is a very transient group of people who go to nightclubs, I know that, I go to nightclubs outside of San Carlos all the time, it's where you meet up with your buddies, and that's why a lot of people go to the city for them. And, you know, this isn't going to just benefit, where it talks about benefiting San Carlos, a lot of the people who are going to come into town are not going to be from San Carlos. I have a whole stack of news releases from cities who have issued with nightclubs, and I know everyone's going to, every city I say, there's going to be, it's going to be a comment that we can't compare to them. Santa Cruz, they talk about, a lot of people that are frequenting these clubs are in fact out of town, are out-of-towners. Same thing with Hayward, Hayward, the, the quote is, all of those arrested were from out of town. And then, you know, I wanted to look to a city that actually is a lot like San Carlos, so we, I looked up Pleasanton. And Pleasanton was ranked the wealthiest middle-sized city in the United States by the Census Bureau, so, San Carlos is a pretty wealthy city, it's got a pretty, pretty nice demographic, and they just, they just voted to close Club Neo, the planning commission actually did a 5-0 because there was a shooting. That's in the wealthiest city, or the wealthiest mid-sized city in the United States. I also look at the nightclubs I went to when I was younger, I used to go to Bluechalk in Palo Alto all the time. For you, those of you who don't know where Bluechalk is, it's located across the street from City Hall and the Police Department in Palo Alto. Bluechalk had a rash of problems, that ended up with a guy getting shot in the City Hall parking lot, and Bluechalk's closed. So those are the issues that I think we have to grapple with, and we have to decide whether or not we're willing to take the risk, because I don't know if the club's going to be exactly like the applicant said, or it's going to be the worst-case scenario like we've seen in other towns. It might be somewhere in the middle, and that's the question, is whether or not we want to continue to subsidize that sort of business, because it is a subsidy, the Carlos Club is never going to recoup the city, the amount of expense it takes to police it. And I just, I don't know if that's fair to our citizens. Can you imagine if a home had 131 incidents? We would have a huge issue with that, I imagine they would be going to court, there would be a whole lot of things going on. 131 incidents, granted, we have 28,000 a year, but 131 incidents for one particular area is a lot, and I don't believe it's actually 131, I, I believe it's a lot higher because that only takes what happens at the actual place into, into count. You know, but I, I think there is a, a middle ground, and I've said it before, I think going to a 47 and becoming a restaurant is a middle ground, I think that's valid. I love the plan, it looks like a great restaurant, but I just am worried that it's going to come, turn into a nightclub of 200 people, and that's 200 people exiting at the same time into our downtown. One of the speakers said, the people are going to be drinking anyways, they're going to be here anyways. It's technically not true, everywhere in San Carlos closes at around 11 o'clock, mainly when the bars stay open, so there's going to be 125 more people downtown San Carlos, possibly till 2:00 in the morning. It may not be 125, but it's built to 125. So we may have 125 extra people getting into our cars and leaving our downtown at the same time, and I think that's a recipe for a very uncomfortable situation for the police department. And also, just looking on the facts, we had a police chief, captain, we had our city manager, Mr. Malpe, and we had our planning director, Al Savay, who we all trust very heavily, we pay a lot of money for them to be here, and they're professionals in what they do, we had all three of them come up and say, you need to deny this conditional use permit. That hasn't happened in a very long time in this town, but all three say, deny this conditional use permit, it's going to be a public safety hazard, we cannot make that finding. So if we as a city council decide that they're wrong, and we decide to go against them, it's on us, absolutely on us, there's no one to hide behind. If anything happens, any incident, anyone gets hurt, that falls on the five of us, and I just don't know if I'm willing to take that risk. Because, you know, the fact of the matter is, when they get off the property, they're our problem. All 200 people, the minute they cross in their alley, are our problem, and I just don't think we have the police force, and I, I definitely don't think that this is the right thing to do for our town. So, you guys know where I stand. So with that, does anyone have anything else to add?
Mr. Mayor, just, I just wanted to, just a reminder, because this is the, the type of proceeding this is, I just want to make sure that some of you have talked about your ex-party contacts, and, and I just want to make sure that everybody, make sure that they do that, if they had, if they had any-
Oh, okay. I, I met with Mr. Duncan, Mr. Bertetta, they've mentioned it in their comments as well, we've also had emails going back and forth, so, yeah.
I, I've never met with Mr. Duncan on this, I'm an old friend of Mr. Bertetta's, and we had a telephone conversation about this, I didn't meet with him physically, so.
Okay, so I'm seeing a couple of people leaning towards, and I don't want to speak for anyone, denial, is there anyone who's willing to make a motion, and we'll see where that goes?
Could I ask one question, please? Is there any, let me ask the city manager, is there any way or any middle ground on this, I, I spoke to you about this today, and I think a lot of us up here would, would be in this case, but I certainly am always trying to figure out a way to split the baby.
Sure.
And try to figure out, I mean, maybe nobody's happy, but somebody gets something. Is there any way that the staff or whatever would, would engage in any kind of a compromise on any of this, to, to allow something even partially of what he's asking, Mr. Duncan's asking for? And I apologize, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I mean, I have to start with you, because if, if, if there's nothing there, then there's nothing there.
Right, I mean, I don't want to say that there isn't any way, because, you know, N is a big number, and I'm sure we haven't quite thought of anything, I think you've all expressed a lot of good ideas tonight. I think the applicant and, and the staff of the Carlos Club expressed a lot of good ideas. I think probably from the staff perspective, and in my conversations with community development and public works and, and police and fire, I think probably, you know, our, our point of view is that probably a proper restaurant-style application would be welcomed by the city. I don't know that you can't have a restaurant that just serves 21-and-over clientele, this really truly is, I mean, some of the things that I heard tonight, and I lost track a little bit during the applicant's conversation about, you know, the lines blurred, blurred a little bit for me between what they were proposing to do, and what they were proposing that they might be able to do, and I, and I lost track a little bit of where we were at with the actual proposal in terms of how they plan to operate the club. I think, you know, some of what they want to do could be accomplished, but I, I do get the feeling that, you know, really, almost what we have are sort of the squishing together of an outdoor restaurant and a nightclub that are going to share certain common facilities, and it brings us back to, I think, a lot of the same problems, the public safety problems, the ingress and egress problems, that just don't work with this exact combination for us. That's not to say, you know, a fresh set of eyes or a fresh perspective on what's really important in this project, and what are they really trying to accomplish? Is it to remain a lounge nightclub combination with a restaurant, or is it really to serve a different clientele as a restaurant? And so I think there would be certainly areas for discussion, I think that needs to be a different application.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to, just make a brief follow-on comment to that. I actually suspect that, I mean, if both, if, if-
I actually suspect that, I mean, if both, if, if, if the applicant is willing to do so, there probably is a process for looking for other alternatives, but it's in the form of a different application. What I worry about a little bit is us trying to negotiate something on the fly.
I understand.
Because, you know, what, what we end up with may not be what we expected to end up with, and may not be what the applicant expected to end up with. I'd rather, in that sense, let the wheels work the way they're designed to work, so everybody has a chance to have input to it and be thoughtful.
Mr. Grokot?
If I may, I think the applicant already said, if we switched him, if we suggested, oh, you know, switch to a 47 liquor license, that puts him out of, I, I guess he could continue operating as just the Carlos Club the way it is now for a year, but he'd have to wait to see if he gets that 47, because they don't just hand him out. He's got to apply, could take a year, so that doesn't, that, I don't see-
The value, I mean, and I don't know that much about the business, but the value of the 48 is far in excess of the 47.
Yeah, that's right. It's therefore been gold and silver.
I can't mention it, yeah.
Right.
Mainly because of their scarcity.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. Okay. Yep, go ahead.
All make a motion that, that we deny the Carlos Club's request for a conditional use permit and architectural review for an outdoor drinking establishment with ancillary dining and entertainment. Is that, Mr. Rumis?
Sorry.
I'm in here.
Yeah, just the, just the one comment is that in your staff report, there's suggested denial findings.
Okay.
And what I-
Where would I go for that?
If you're going to make a motion to deny, I'd like you to refer to those findings.
All right.
And it's attachment, excuse me, I think it's seven. And I suggested in my memo that if there are any other factual issues that you would like to add to the, to those findings, that it may be that if they were material to your decision, it may be that you'd like us to, you'd vote on the motion and then have us bring back findings at your next meeting, which could be on the consent count.
Does Mr. Collins need to read all the findings, correct?
He doesn't have to read them. I'd, I'd want to make sure he refers to the findings that are in the staff report as attachment seven.
You can just refer to that, yeah. Oh, here it is. Okay, so.
It's near the end, and then the, and just the other-
I think it's near the seven. Oh, well.
Go ahead.
And just, I know it's hard to find. And the other, the other point is that you heard a lot of evidence and public testimony tonight, and there may have been additional evidence that you considered in, in being able to not make the appropriate findings, that we could add to this, to the findings. And if you would like any of that information to be added to the denial findings, we can have you vote on the motion and then bring back actual findings that have that new, that new and additional information.
All right.
And I, I suggested that in my memo. I don't, I don't mean to overly complicate it, but I just want you to be aware of that option.
Now that you've thoroughly confused me.
Is there any, is there any benefit for bringing back more denial findings?
Well, I'm, well, what we have are findings that are based upon the, the staff report and the information that staff presented to you. But there, because this is a public hearing, there, there may have been new information, new, new bases for denial that you, that were material to your decision. If there's something like that in, as part of your decision-making process, it is appropriate and I think prudent to add those to the denial findings.
You can just go with that.
So that, so that we could make sure they're incorporated, because the law says you have to have written findings.
Right.